It's 1:00 PM.
So we'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance done by our distinguished clerk treasurer Kathy Lewis.
Okay, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, justiciable.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And now we'll go through the agenda and start with a public comment and I'll read the public comment into the record before we proceed any further and the public comment line is open, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Natalie Wood for the record, the public comment line is open.
Okay. The public will be able to participate in the meeting by watching the live stream of the meeting at Douglas County website and the public comment will be accepted prior to the board meeting through either Douglas County website or by setting up an appointment with the county manager's office up until the day before the board meeting. Members of the public may click on the following link to watch the live stream of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. It's HTTPS colon backslash backslash U two E two period B slash three four R J Y G nine five Y eight. That is also listed in the agenda. To offer public comment before the board meeting, members of the public may submit public comments online through the county's public comment form by clicking clicking on the following link which is listed in the agenda. Written public comments may be also mailed to the Douglas County Manager's Office at post office box two one eight Minden Nevada eight nine four two three, but all public comment must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in supplemental materials. All written public comments that are received prior to 4:00 PM the day before the board meeting will be compiled and will be added to supplemental material for the county commissioners and the public to review prior to the meeting. Any written public comment received the day of the board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials in the county's website and distributed to the Board of Commissioners within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may call the county manager's office at seven seven five seven eight two ninety two one to obtain help making public comment. To make public comment during the board meeting, the public must call seven seven five seven eight three six zero zero seven and leave a voice message which will be played for the Board of Commissioners and public when the public comment is announced. Although the public comment phone line can accommodate multiple incoming calls at once, if a member of the public should get a busy signal, please call back because the possibility of high volume exists and there could be an increased potential for technical difficulties. Citizens are therefore encouraged to submit their public comments in writing prior to the date and time of the board meeting. When leaving a voice message, members of the public should begin their public comment by stating and spelling their full name and whether he or she favors, opposes, or has no opinion on the agenda item under consideration. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played to the county commissioners of and the public during each public comment period. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and will only occur at the beginning and end of the board meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item during the meeting. If members of the public desire to comment on more than one agenda item and believe that their comments will exceed the three minutes offered at both the beginning and end of the board meeting, they are encouraged to submit written public comments to supplement their verbal public comments. Douglas County's public comment phone line will become available to the public comment for public comment at 1:00 PM. The opening public comment, when the chair calls for opening public comment, the line will remain open for at least five minutes and to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the public, on the county's public comment phone line. Once the chair closes opening public comment, any voice messages received after that time will be considered at closing public comment. The county's public comment phone line will remain open to allow for closing public comment to be recorded at as the meeting progresses. When the chair calls for closing public comment, the phone line will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message at the county, county's public comment phone line. All right, it's 1:05, so it will remain open until at least 1:10 or until the last voice message is received. Ms. Wood, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we have four. I will start playing them.
Okay.
The quality is not great on this one. I'm going to forward, fast forward and see if it's a little bit better. It sounds like it's pretty garbled through the whole thing. I couldn't hear anything.
Do you know who sent it?
I do not know who sent it. I could have Paula in our office call the number and ask them to recall and we send a message.
Okay.
I'll play the next one.
Ellie Waller, this master plan update process is contentious and broken. No disrespect to staff or the planning commissioners that have taken on the monumental task to review the update, but the cart before the horse approach without completing the community plans first makes absolutely no sense. As the community plans are the framework for future land use and associated mass conservation, growth management, et cetera. Furthermore, public input has been underrepresented as it has not been fairly transitioned into the planning commissioner's recommendation for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners. Two members of the planning commission were not available for the final group review as well as garbled video due to weather conditions. Some meetings should have been postponed. A total of seven public comments were captured or opposed the master plan with three reporting issues in the master plan, and I consider that opposition also. The Board of County Commissioners review is proposed first December 11th to the 13th. This is an arduous task of the O C C where we possibly reviewing in excess of 500 pages before the three day review schedule with the survey data, planning commission's recommendation, all associated public comments as well as required annual reports hopefully. I'm all about the community plan being updated. But what rights does the county have the authority to change any community plan language through this master plan update without the public's participation in the formal community plan update process? And then have a vote since it's subjective on the county's part to make decisions on behalf of the community members. I am requesting that a new land use action be added to put community plans on the radar for update as a high priority, one to three years, thus sooner the better. I'm requesting again that all public comments be provided to date in the December B O C C packet. I strongly urge the Board of County Commissioners to request staff provide an additional section to the implementation element that status of 2011, 2016 action. History must be captured for a better future. This can be done by utilizing all annual reports. As requested many times, provide those reports. Secondly, please explain what the audit committee will be discussing on November 30th. Thank you.
Say next.
Lynn Muddy, M U D Z Y. Based on which Board of County Commissioner candidates got elected and the ones who did not, voters can look forward to a county government that will address residential overbuilding. In addition to contributing to traffic congestion, new residential development doesn't pay for itself. Before end movers generate any property tax revenue, they immediately start consuming county services like 911 and road maintenance that is paid for by existing residents. Harold Chaplin's letter in today's Record Courier presumes to correct Commissioner Engels on some technicalities regarding the Tahoe South Event Center. However, Commissioner Engels has said he has no objection to an event center, only how it's paid for. The voters settled that issue by defeating the funding mechanism rejecting development, redevelopment area number two. Like businesses who feel they will benefit from an event center are cordially invited to pay for it themselves. I am looking forward to a new board majority that was elected by candidates but was elected by candidates Walt Nowitzad and Mark Gardner, who aligned themselves with what the voters wanted, not what their special interest puppeteers demanded.
Okay, that one's timed out. I'll go to the next one.
John Sheridan, J O H N S H E R I D A N. Calling to make comments on administrative agenda item number five, master plan update. The community development department has gone to great lengths to solicit and include community input into the update process. Community Development Director Tom Delaire made a presentation to Grid in January of this year. Mr. Delaire stated, now is the time to update the Grid's community plan if we would like for it to be incorporated into the master plan update. Grid took on the endeavor of creating an ad hoc committee to update its plan, worked in conjunction with the community, along with members of the county's community development department and the planning commission. The community plan document was vetted through two public workshops before it was approved by the Grid Board at our September meeting. The Grid has met all timelines laid out by the county staff and it was the Grid's board and public's expectation it would be included into the master plan update. I'm still failing to understand what has occurred to the November 4th master plan draft before the planning commission, of which at that time included our community plan. The planning commission meeting in early November has no mention of why the Rancho's community plan is no longer included within the update and was excluded from their draft. To add to my personal frustration is the failed communication between the county and the Gardinerville Rancho's G I D since the decision was made to exclude our community plan prior to the approval of a final draft before the planning commission meeting two days ago on the 17th. The Grid's general manager was not made aware from anyone at the county of the decision to exclude Grid's community plan. I, in fact, found out from a constituent that the county excluded the Rancho plan and was totally caught off guard. So I'm sure you can understand my frustration and recent email correspondence. Proper communication is vital, but more importantly, the two-way communication is not changing the story and keeping to your word. The Gardinerville Rancho's community sincerely hopes the county will do the right thing and include our community plan back into the master plan update with language that states the county will work with the Grid's community plan to the greatest extent possible. I want the planning commission to know that the Rancho's was not heard nor included in the master plan update in its current state. This is unfortunate being we are the largest residential community in the county. I want to comment about how inadequate the public meetings have been leading up to the finalization of the master plan update. My question to the commissioners and county manager Patrick Case is, why haven't you utilized hair's funding to get our planning and commissioner meetings back open during this crucial time to finalize a master plan update? I recall you made a spectacle to go to the Capitol and survey letters on the governor to open our county early on. Why, why, why hasn't one of you tried to get our public meetings back going?
Okay, that one's timed out. The first caller did call back and leave a message. We'll play that one.
Jim Slade. On item four today, the issuance of a $16.5 million bond to finance quote, a water project. Open meeting law demands that quote, agenda items be described in clear and complete detail so that the public will receive notice in fact of what is to be discussed by the public body unquote. This item fails that requirement since the term a water project is so vague and nonspecific that it does not provide the required detailed specificity and is therefore a violation of the open meeting law and cannot be considered today. On item five, this entire master plan update has been deeply flawed from the start and has had so little public outreach that community development should shell this entire update and do it right next year. Staff claims they've involved all the communities in the county in this update, but that's not true. They should have had meetings in every community to let them weigh in on their own community planning. That has not happened as it has in every past update. Not once in this update to the current 2011 master plan has any text from that plan appeared at all. There's been some mention of the draft 2016 update, but that update was never adopted. For the most part, you've been dealing with a proposed update crafted by community development but then put for their handpicked consultant. This update has been repeatedly pointed out as more pro-development than any past update and does not in many cases reflect the public interest. In all past updates, the public's been able to weigh in on each element of the master plan as it was considered. Being limited to three minutes before the meeting before all the elements are discussed and three minutes at the end after all the votes have been taken is completely inadequate and an insult to the public. This update needs to be delayed until every community has in-person meetings to discuss their own plan until the annual reports required by law are submitted and until an updated 2017 action matrix with the current status addressed is completed. Currently, their that up matrix has 117 items, only four of which have been addressed. Just ignoring that action matrix and starting over from scratch is unacceptable. Public outreach has been unacceptable, individual community plans, the backbone of the master plan have not been addressed adequately. Reports required by NRS have not been submitted and the so-called implementation plan is a total failure. There have been, community development's been so busy crafting the plan to their own liking that they have failed the residents in getting adequate meaningful input from them. The update should be continued until next year. More important to get it right than to do it fast.
Okay, that was the last public comment received. It came in at 1:13 PM.
And it's 1:16 now. Have you got any more public comment?
Not at this point, sir.
Okay, then you'll continue to take it until the end of the meeting. We'll close public comment. Unless the commissioners have anything to say. Seeing no raised hands, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move the agenda to be approved and submitted.
All right. I I would like to pull item four and I mean item two and was it two and three or two and four? The deal with the water bond and it's and the debt commission. I, I do think they need to be discussed together. I do think that they need to be reworked and I understand the bond council asked us to withdraw portions of that clarity and I think that that probably needs to be report re-put back into it, re-put, needs to be added back in. So I would like two and four to be pulled at this point in time. And any other changes from commissioners?
Is that a motion?
No, we have, we have to have the agenda approved, so we're looking at getting it approved minus items two and four.
Move we approve the agenda minus items two and four.
Okay. So we have a motion, any discussion? A motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Rice. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda my item minus items two and four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, then the motion carries 5-0. Approval of previous minutes. Then we have a motion for minutes for the 10:15 2020 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the the draft minutes for the 10:15 2020 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners' work session October 15, 2020.
Right. Commissioner Rice, second. So a motion by Commissioner Walsh and a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Okay, we will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. And I'll read the item one into the record. For possible action, discussion to approve onsite beer and wine retail liquor license for the Grill Next Door LLC represented by the owners Jennifer Fredrickson and Daniel Fredrickson. Jennifer and Daniel have both signed a waiver of notice of hearing. The Grill Next Door LLC is located at 1281 Kimmerling Drive, Suites 11 and 12, Gardinerville, Nevada 89460. Captain Mitch Karian.
Good afternoon, Captain Ron Mitch Karian for the Sheriff's Office. This applicant has completed all the required paperwork and the Sheriff's Office is not in objection to this addition to their permit.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fredrickson, obviously you're here. Do you need or want to say anything? Talk us out of it or what?
Thank you, we're good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we'll be looking for a motion. Any board member?
Mr. Chair, I, Mr. Chair, I move approval of the onsite beer and wine retail liquor license for the Grill Next Door as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Engels. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Ms. Fredrickson. Good luck.
Thank you.
Are you the Grill Next Door?
My husband and I are technically the Grill Next Door.
Very clever, very clever. Okay. We're going to adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Any items to be pulled off of the consent calendar? We have items A through G. Any pull? Seeing that none are being pulled, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through G.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items A through.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries 5-0. So now we'll move on to the administrative agenda. Item number one. Douglas County Award Presentation. The presentation, this is for presentation only ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2020 P dash 101 declaring November 14th through 20 2020 as Nevada Flood Awareness Week in Douglas County. Ms. Walker, 10-minute presentation. Will it take you that long to read it?
Hopefully not. Courtney Walker for the record, thank you very much. I'll read the proclamation and then just say a few words about our annual flood awareness week.
Please do.
Proclamation number 2020 P dash 101, proclamation of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nevada, declaring the week of November 14th through the 20th, 2020 as Nevada Flood Awareness Week. Whereas Douglas County recognizes the significant threat flooding poses to residents, the county and our local economy, having endured repeated flood events from our watershed in the Carson River, Pine Nut Creek, Buckeye Creek, Johnson Lane Wash and Buckbrush Wash Watersheds, including the historic floods of 1955, 1997, 2006, 2014, 2015, and 2017. And whereas Douglas County is at particular risk of flooding from slow rising riverine flooding in the winter and swift flash flooding in the summer. And whereas during Nevada Flood Awareness Week, local state and federal agencies across the state are working together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to protect their homes and families from a flood and plan for recovery. And whereas Nevada Flood Awareness Week 2020 will be held statewide the week of November 14th through the 20th with the theme Nevada Floods, Are You Prepared? And the corresponding website is www.nevadafloods.org. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that Douglas County will participate in Nevada Flood Awareness Week from November 14th through the 20th, 2020 and supports increased public awareness of flood threats, encouraging all county residents to take action. We hold this event, we hold Nevada Flood Awareness Week in our partners throughout the state of Nevada in order to help to raise awareness of the flooding threat that we have here in Douglas County as well as throughout the state of Nevada. We usually hold a community event at the Douglas County Community Center where we have several representatives available from FEMA, from the state of Nevada, the State Flood Play Manager. We have usually East Fork Fire, the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District, the Army Corps of Engineers and several other agencies participate to disseminate information and help people out with flood insurance questions and if their property is in a flood zone and the like. Unfortunately, 2020 has been a challenging year in more ways than one. So we decided at the last moment to cancel the in-person event. However, we did record several presentations and provided those links and they are still available through a press release and through social media so people can still go on and watch a presentation. I gave a presentation on the various projects that we have happening here in Douglas County. The Ruin Strafe Area Drainage Master Plan is one of them. The Johnson Lane Area Drainage Master Plan implementation. It has another update and then a project that we're looking at doing for Pine Nut Creek to help out the Fish Springs area in regards to the numbers fire and any flood mitigation efforts that we have related to that as we go into winter. And so there are several projects that we have going. I encourage people to go to the Douglas County YouTube page and look up those videos. There's other videos from the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District and Division of Water Resources Flood Play Managers Group. Really good information and also has everyone's contact information. And so I encourage you to reach out to me or some of the other partnering agencies if you have questions about what's going on in our community here. We'd be happy to share with you the projects that we're working on. We are disappointed that we couldn't hold the in-person event, but we're hoping that things will be back on track for next year. And so with that, I appreciate your time to let me update you on what we have going on.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Questions from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you again for coming and reminding us of the threat. And the issue of of flooding, especially in Johnson Lane. I certainly was a little worried when we got all the rain this weekend about that. And still looking for some of that work done on the Kim drainage, but I guess it's put off again.
It's not, but that's okay.
What'd you say?
I'd be happy to talk to you about it offline though.
Okay. Anytime. So we'll take care of item number one unless we have any further questions from board members. I pulled item two. So we'll move on to item three. For possible action, discussion on the adoption of resolution 2020 R dash 103, increasing the South Tahoe refuse companies rates by 7.11% for the 2021 calendar year as allowed under the terms of the franchise agreement. Ms. Richter, Mr. Richter, please.
Chairman and Commissioners, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works for the record. What you've got before you today on the agenda is the rate, the annual rate increase. This year it is for the base year rate that's allowed under the solid waste services franchise agreement, which was originally dated back in October of 2006. This proposed rate increase was calculated in accordance with the protocols established in the Solid Waste Rate Setting Policies and Procedures Manual, which is dated from March 30th of 2012. In response to South Tahoe refuse request, the South Lake In response to the South Tahoe Refuge's request, the South Lake Tahoe Basin Waste Management Authority, also referred to as the Joint Powers Authority or JPA, contracted with Crowe LLP to review this rate application. Upon their completion of that rate review, their report came back with a recommendation for and across the board rate increase of 7.11% for both residential and commercial waste services within the Tahoe Township portions of Douglas County, so at the lake that is. A copy of that report is in your packet if you want to read through the details. The Joint Powers Authority met on October 29th to consider this report and the rate application, and they accepted that authority, which is comprised of Eldorado County, South Lake Tahoe, City of South Lake Tahoe, and Douglas County representatives reviewed and accepted that that report and the base year rate analysis and recommended rate increases for each of those separate jurisdictions. So what was before you today is both the recommendation of the resolution to establish these rates for next year and for you to ratify that. With that, I'll open it up for questions. I will mention that we have represented some from South Tahoe Refuge on this meeting if there are any questions for them.
And I would like to turn over the discussion to the Commissioner who is on the JPA and is most affected by this rate increase in his constituents. Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir. I was present at the meeting. I listened to the presentation that was done by Crowe LLP. And after listening to the people from STR and looking at the rates and what they're having to pay to dispose of our solid waste, it seemed to me that the rate increase, which for us in Douglas County will amount to $1.43 a month, City of South Lake Tahoe will increase 277 in Eldorado County, 204. And it seemed to me that with the across-the-board 7.11% rate increase seemed reasonable. And therefore I voted for the increase.
Do you want anyone from South Lake Tahoe Refuge to speak up on this issue?
It would seem prudent to have them explain why their cost of business has gone up and why these rate increases are necessary. So yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Jeff Tom with South Tahoe Refuge's company. As Philip said, this is a base year, and unfortunately the base year happened to fall in 2020. And you know, the next two years are CPI years. But the main reasons for some of these increases are, you know, costs and insurance has been a big one. The recycling markets have tanked, so there's no revenue coming in from those at all anymore. Insurance costs have gone way up. You know, I think those are probably the three big ones that has, you know, caused the issues and the problems and the reason we're seeking this relief today. I can give you more specifics. I got Terry Treese here. He's our controller. He talks numbers better than I do. So if you have any specific questions, we can ask Terry.
Commissioners, questions? You know, I was reading through the report and I was struck by the the cost of living was 3.26, I believe. And then the very next statement that you had on that was that your salaries and benefits went up 5.5% in 2019, 2020. Now, the first thing that we always examine when we have a budget increase like that is, one, did we budget for it? And that was not clear in the presentation that you made. And then the second part of that is, generally, we look for cost savings, and which would mean maybe we freeze hiring or even go to the extreme of reducing personnel. Did you consider any of those actions? And do you anticipate that you'll have another 5.5% increase in personnel costs?
What we're facing over here is, you know, the big part of this, the state of California has enacted legislation where the minimum wage goes up each year, and we've always been a little bit above the minimum wage. So as that goes up, we also take some of our other employees and bring their wages up as well. One thing we don't have up here is a great market to draw the people that we need to here, you know, especially skilled employees, drivers and that such. In order to keep, you know, the employees here and keeping, you know, with STR, you know, we've got to get competitive. And, you know, we've lost a lot of employees to different bigger industries up here in Tahoe, you know, because of our pay scale. So, you know, we had to readjust it, and you know, I think that's why you're seeing that increase now. In the future, you know, we're going to have the conversations of what we can do. We've also got some ideas on how we want to rework systems, which we hope will draw down the amount of employees we'll need and bring up our efficiencies. We'll bring that to you at a later date. So, you know, we're looking at all those things, but you know, the big part is, you know, we've got to keep our employees and we've got to keep them here. And that's, you know, it's a tough market up here. I'm just being honest with you.
So you do know that Douglas County is right next to you, and you could relocate your operation to Douglas County?
I'd love to. I would absolutely love to. You just tell me when and where and we're there.
Well, you got a big operation down at the transfer station. Anyway, I appreciate your response. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Ingalls?
This is just a comment. I just got my auto insurance and it did a pretty big bump this year. So some of these things are completely out of the control of a business, and liability, vehicle, all of these other things, it's just, they just go one way. That's up.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rice?
As a customer, I have been more than pleased with the service that I have received from STR, especially their personnel. They haven't destroyed one trash can yet, which is like what it was before we moved here. Would you speak to your plant, your future plans for the pickup that will allow one man to handle the disposal there on the South Lake side?
Yeah, what we'd like to do in the future and what we're working towards right now is we want to go to a, you know, semi-automated automated system and put carts out for all the customers. You know, that way, we're hoping it will reduce our workforce a little bit, but it will also reduce some of our insurance costs as well, because these people won't be out there picking up the cans and the bags and all that. So that's a plan we're, you know, putting together, and we want to, you know, bring it forward here since we have the right numbers together. We really need to change our system, you know, to some type of automated, and it just makes a lot of sense, and that's one thing we're looking for down in the future. And with those carts, you know, we're going to build off of MSW, probably Greenways, and eventually recycling carts as well, which is kind of a state in most communities today. We're a little bit different up here because of the unlimited mandatory, so we've got a few issues to tackle. But we want to change things, you know. We just can't continue to do it the way we are, you know, specifically, you know, to try to take care of labor costs, equipment costs, and all those costs that are associated with it.
Further questions? If there are no further questions, then we'd be looking for a motion.
Seeing as I'm the most impacted on the board, I'll make it.
Okay.
If we adopt resolution 2020R-103, increasing the South Tahoe Refuge Company's rates by 7.11% for the 2021 calendar year as presented.
All right.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, and a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion carries. Congratulations, folks. Not so sure the taxpayers are happy, but that's the way it goes. Community, we, I pulled number four, so we're moving to number five. This is for presentation only regarding actions taken so far with regard to Douglas County 20-year master plan update. Presentation will include an overview of public outreach and public comments received to date, including findings from the public survey. Staff will introduce the draft master plan update that was approved by the Planning Commission for a period of public inspection to solicitate additional comments between November 19th and December 8th, 2020. The additional public comment regarding the draft 2020 master plan may be submitted to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration prior to the board's final adoption of the master plan update. The board is tentatively scheduled to consider the draft 2020 master plan update during the special meetings that will be held on December 9th through 11th, 2020. Mr. Booth, Mr. Delair on behalf of the Community Development, and Mr. Walter on behalf of the Planning Commission. A 15-minute presentation. Right. So who wants to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll lead off and let Sam and Tom continue the discussion. And Tom, I think you can share your screen. We have a few pieces of information we can share with you.
Whoa, I guess so.
That would be a lot of information to go over.
Yes.
Did it not share the right one?
Actually, well, you got your entire file, all your files.
We're looking at your desktop. Awesome.
That shows you how hardworking Tom is.
Screen, it says screen number two. There we go. I got the green banner on the right side. Oh my goodness. Okay. Tom Delair, Community Development Director for the record. We've got Kurt Walder also. He's our Planning Commissioner, Chairman, and we've also got Sam Taylor with us today. And I guess we'll just get started on this, and I do, you know, have a lot of thank yous to staff and a lot of organizations in the county in providing and helping us get to the point we are today. But I'll skip that for right now and maybe do it when we do the power, when we do the presentations at the workshops. But I'll turn the time over to Chairman Walder.
Thank you very much, Tom. Mr. Chairman and members of the County Commission, I'm pleased to report that the Planning Commission approved the 2020 Douglas County Master Plan on November 17th by a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Klutz had to leave our meeting before the final vote due to a fire near his home, but he has indicated he would have voted aye on approving the plan. Commissioner Akola was absent. The master plan we approved was the result of five meetings lasting a total of 25 hours. We took over 165 votes on the substance of the plan. Only 15 motions, less than 10%, received any nay votes. The deliberative process we followed allowed compromise on many issues, thus producing a more than 90% unanimous approval on our actions. Every member of the Planning Commission had multiple opportunities to add, delete, or modify anything in the proposed master plan. This includes all of the goals, policies, and actions. I'm pleased to report that members engaged in thoughtful debate, serious questioning of staff about the merits of proposed language, and made many requests for additional information. And I believe the members of the Planning Commission were satisfied with the efforts of the many county staff who assisted with the master plan update process. Part of our mandate, as expressed at the two joint meetings we held earlier this year, was to streamline the master plan, to reduce it in size and eliminate redundancies, and to improve graphics and readability. I believe we have met those objectives. The master plan we approved will be about 310 pages compared to the over 350 pages in the 2017 proposed plan and the approximately 560 pages in the existing 2011 master plan. Despite the limitations caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, I believe we had a sizable and meaningful participation by Douglas County citizens. The public survey in September received responses from over 1,000 individuals and provided many useful comments that prompted the Planning Commission to make important changes in the draft master plan. By comparison, the 2016 survey was conducted over twice the length of time and produced less than 900 responses. And I reviewed the recent Lion County Master Plan Survey, a county with 20% greater population, and found they had less than half our number of responses. The process followed by the Planning Commission allowed a multitude of opportunities for the public to submit comments. In addition to the survey, two all-day in-person workshops were held. Written and oral comments were allowed at all five Planning Commission meetings. A dedicated email allowed unlimited written comment at any time during the entire period the draft plan was being considered, and will remain open for comments during your consideration of the master plan. Contrary to what has been suggested, we placed no limits on written comments, not a limitation on length or number of submissions. I respect and embrace the opportunity that the Board of County Commissioners now has to make further improvements in the master plan submitted by the Planning Commission. We stand ready to assist with completion of this important document. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walter. Before we go on, any questions from the board members to Mr. Walter? I don't see any. So we'll move on.
Hello?
I didn't see you, Dave. I'm sorry.
Yeah. We got a call in from John Sheridan, who's a member of the Grid Commission. And I'm wondering why this discrepancy between what he had been told and what is apparently in the master plan at this point is happening.
Yes, I can speak to that briefly. We did solicit the views of Grid, and they were very helpful in outlining a number of different goals and policies that we inserted in the document that we recommended. In some instances, they went outside of their purview. As you know, Grid, all of the GIDs have specific mandates of what their authority is, and in some cases, they commented and included the information that was outside of that. So we did not feel that was appropriate to put into the document. We were also concerned that the Board of County Commissioners has not had a chance to review the information that they provided us. And unlike the plans for prosperity of Mindon and Gardinerville, which the Board of County Commissioners did previously approve, the document that they prepared over the summer has not had a review by your body. So we respect the input that the people of Grid have given us, and we respect the views of Mr. Sheridan, but that's why we took the actions that we did and not including their entire document in the master plan that we approved.
Well, the ranchers are about 20% of the population. I think they should have a wide say in what they would like in this program. So I think it should be brought forward before this is approved.
I agree that they are an important part of the community, and we did solicit their output and their input, and it was very helpful. And it's now before you to consider if you want to add any of the other things that they included in the final document.
Further questions? Tom, do you need to share the screen?
I was going to finish the presentation. I don't know if you want to go back and look at the history and how we got here. That's fine if you don't. What we included in the board packet was a public outreach report, and I didn't know if you had any questions on that, but I just was hoping to highlight a few things out of that report. Basically, and thank really Jennifer Davidson, Melissa Blaser, and Bailey Gumm for all their efforts in providing the public announcements and sending out emails to our district email subscription list. I think there's 664 of those that this survey went out to via email. Also, I want to thank the towns and GIDs and Chamber Business Council, the Meals on Wheels Program. the Meals on Wheels Program for providing links in, in their, in the, on their websites and, and in the, I guess, in each of the, of the meals that were presented to the, to the seniors in the Meals on Wheels Program. There was a flyer insert that we provided that they, they provided to their, uh, customers. And then also they, uh, the towns and GIDs placed this on their websites. I, I really appreciate, uh, their assistance. Um, in addition to that, Douglas County, Indian Hills GID and the Gardenville Ranchos GID, um, all in town of Minden, all placed, um, a, an insert in their, in their, um, in their bills that they mail out to their customers or had some sort of description on the bill, uh, to take this survey, and that reached 11,370 customers. And then Melissa's, Melissa's team made, uh, 14 Facebook posts reaching a roughly 30,000 people and, uh, 12 tweets reaching another, um, just under 7,000 people. But, uh, Melissa wanted to, to let, make sure the board knew and it's in the report that the community, community relations team, um, has observed an overall 60% decline in post engagements um, relative to this time or compared to this time last year. So, uh, she wanted to make sure that that people are just tired of Face, um, Facebook and Twitter, and, uh, they're, they're not engaging as much on that. And it wasn't just because of the survey. It's, she's experiencing that, um, with, with all of the county posts. So, um, that was just the summary I wanted to provide. Um, and then we did, uh, you know, have a timeline where we're, we're coming up to the end of that. This was all based on the direction from the County Commission and the Planning Commission. Um, I'm giving us the timeframe to December of 2020, and we're coming in with a, with, uh, the end of this process. Uh, and as you recall, uh, back in the beginning, uh, Wood Rogers had put together a uh, an audit, uh, of the 2016 document, and, uh, they, they reported at that time there were 53 goals, 206 policies, and, um, and, uh, we ended up, I, my, we ended up with 24 goals and 130 policies in the new plan, uh, excluding the community area policies. And my number, uh, for the master plan is slightly different than Mr. Chairman Walter's because, uh, because I included the, the title cover sheet, uh, preface, title, uh, table of contents. And, uh, and so we did have 1336 total pages. And then with the, we're in the process right now of updating that document based on the input we received from the Planning Commission on Tuesday. And we're anticipating four pages at least to be removed from that number. And, um, and other than that, um, right now where we're at, we've, we've got our website, uh, for the master plan text update at the Community Development uh, page of the county's website, and it has the survey results uh, on that page. Also, the, the PC working document with the goals, policies, and actions showing the, the revisions that were made uh, during, during the process of the Planning Commission's review. We're working on a clean version of the Planning Commission's approved master plan document. I'm, we're hoping to get that posted, uh, tomorrow. Uh, we want to make sure we have one more final review of that before we let it loose on the public. And, and then they have, then the public will have an opportunity to weigh in, uh, comment on that document, uh, prior to the board meetings, uh, coming up. We also have on the website, the, the second draft is which, which is the draft that the the Planning Commission did review. And that has the goals, policies included in that document. The first draft is also on the website with links to the, just the text. That doesn't include goals and policies. It's just the text update. And then, uh, the, you can still get to the links on the, on the workshop presentation videos and and the, on the goals that were established early on in this. So what's next is the County Commission Meetings, Public Hearings on December 9th and 10th and 11th, if we need it, and the public can submit comments, uh, via the phone or, uh, at the number listed here on the screen or the email at masterplan@douglasnv.us. So that's what I have. If there's any further questions.
Well, I think there will be. Uh, Commissioner Engels.
I recently attended the Carson River Conservancy Seminar a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that they strongly recommended is that the counties that are here and affected by the Carson River, uh, have a water component in their master plans. And we seem to neglect this. We have a situation in Topaz where their GID is down to one well. Uh, the grid wells are having problems. Ruenshof is having, uh, wells that are being over appropriated. Everywhere we look, there's signs that our groundwater is being over appropriated. And with a season like we had last year, when we got nothing, no rain, no snow or anything, uh, the only thing that happens to our aquifers is they get depleted. There's nothing to replenish them. It's time that we start to look at this and have it as a component with our master plan. It's, it's one of the most vital and, and serious considerations in the entire process, because without water, I don't care what we want to do. So, um, I've spoken to some people about this. I guess I haven't been vocal enough, but, uh, it, it's a component that should be included starting now, and, um, that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Uh, well, uh, go ahead, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to respond to Mr. Engels because I think he makes a very good point that, uh, water is important. Um, I did a really quick review of some of the master plans of other counties, similar counties in the area, and I found only one that broke out water as a specific element. Um, so I think the, the board's request initially was to try and consolidate and streamline the document. So, um, I, I don't know, uh, know that, uh, we, we took that to, to mean we should break out water as a separate element at the time. I did do a quick word search of the document, uh, that we, uh, considered, uh, uh, one of the earlier drafts, and we mentioned water 128 times in the, uh, the document. Uh, and I didn't do a separate, uh, pullout for, uh, aquifer or wastewater or other things. So I think we've got a, a pretty good attention to, uh, water in the document itself. Uh, but we'd be happy to look, uh, to, uh, to your review, Commissioner Engels, uh, for other refinements or improvements. But you're absolutely right. Water is very important, and we tried to put that in there, uh, where it was, uh, where it was appropriate.
Commissioner Engels.
Uh, we are not alone. The state engineer has, uh, the area out in Mason Smith Valley, uh, the Walker River Basin, uh, they are on allocation. The, uh, areas out in Elko are on strict allocation. And, um, what would make us any different from what they're dealing with, uh, I don't know. Uh, we have the same considerations. And with, in regard to this, we don't need to be reactive. We need to be actively proactive in anticipating what may be headed our way. And it's vital that this has a priority in the current master plan. Thank you.
Mr. Cates, um, can you speak to the status of the hydrological study the USGS is performing?
Uh, for the record, Patrick Cates, um, I, I don't have a specific update at this time, uh, due to all the COVID issues that we've been dealing with. We've been delayed in, in getting that going. Uh, my intention is that we tackle that after the first of the year, uh, that we update the USGS study as well as engage with all the other water purveyors um, in the basin and work on the, uh, the plan, the wa- water plan that we're required to have by statute. I don't have the bill number in one of these few years to complete that, and that is one of the big tasks I want to tackle in the new year.
Okay, and maybe it'd be appropriate to have that in the, uh, master plan as where you are and the status of it. Mr. Engels?
Without having the USGS, there are certain things just that we know are going on with our groundwater in the Carson Valley. Uh, we know that TRE, uh, being down to one well is mission critical. We know that the grid aquifer is over appropriated. We know that, and this is, this was Ed James when they gave the, uh, Conservancy Report to the Commission some months ago, that the, uh, wells, the, the domestic wells in Ruenshof area are over appropriated along with Fish Springs. And it, it just, it just stands to reason. So in light of just the observation of what the conditions are going on right now, um, we should include this in the master plan.
No, I, I, I just have to say, your vision of what it is is completely different from mine. Uh, and you're using the term over appropriated, which isn't correct. Uh, and you, you also need to know that, that aquifer in, uh, the Topaz area is not even related to the aquifer that, of the Carson Valley. And, uh, I think if we keep saying it's all over appropriate, that's people, what people hear. That is not the correct status. And, uh, I, I just want, have to correct what you were saying about it, right?
What, what makes you, uh, any more of an authority than me? Uh, you've got a situation.
Have you been to any of the conferences on it? Have you been on the CWSD? Have you studied it?
Chairman, we're pumping a million gallons a day from Minden to Carson. That's 365 million gallons a year.
Why are we doing that? Why are we doing that? We're doing it because they have water rights in our aquifer.
Yeah, that's right. What they're doing, what they're doing is they're depleting the aquifers on the periphery in the valley.
They're not depleting it.
You didn't attend that meeting with the subconservancy or the every one of those engineers, scientists, and everybody at that meeting agreed, because I asked the question. The Carson River flows from south to north because of gravity. Is the water in the permeable rocks in the aquifers being tugged on by gravity, just like the Carson River, and moving to the low point in the valley, albeit slow? Uh, and they all said yes. So.
Takes 10 years to get from the Pine nuts to the Carson River.
Well, something's going on out there. People are having to dig deeper. I talk to my well guy. He tells me they just keep going deeper. So.
Anecdotal information is not what we go on. We've got to go on what, what has actually been measured. And.
Oh, I know. You're, you're an advocate and you, you just see it one way, and I don't see it that way.
Yeah, and, and so I respectfully disagree with it, with what you're saying, but we shouldn't put it out any, my truth shouldn't be any more important or less important than your truth. So I think what we need is a definitive study, which I just asked Mr. Cates about. I was hoping that it was gonna already be started since we allocated $330,000 to it. I would hope that you and, and your contemporaries on the commission that come up, comes up, that you will fund that again. It's a two-year study, and it will eliminate these kinds of discussions. It is designed to say to everybody the aquifer is this big, it's this wide, it's this deep, and it has this many gallons in it.
That's not how an aquifer works.
Uh, uh, let's not get into any further discussion on aquifer. This is on the master plan. And we're getting down into the, the nitty gritty, uh, of this and the technicalities, which we both have different views on. Commissioner Nelson?
I think that one of the things that everybody does agree on is that there's more paper rights than water rights. Than actual water in the ground, there's more paper rights to that water than there is actual water. And I think that the discharge and recharge is what we need to know. And we don't know that at this point, but we need to get that study done as soon as possible.
Well, we do know, uh, what we use and what we replenish. That's published on State, on the state's, uh, website. That is updated by the state engineer, but moving.
Yeah, that, that is engineers assuming certain things, which may not be true. There's a lot of things going on in the western part of the United States that, uh, we don't really know. It's, uh, engineered a certain way, but that doesn't mean it's actually what is happening.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Delair, I'm tired of talking about this.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Penzel. Uh, we do have, um, two sections within the master plan today discussing water. If you, when you're reading the, when you're reading through the plan, it's in chapter two under, um, agriculture and conservation. Uh, it's towards the end of the conservation section. In addition to that, uh, we've included, um, information within public facilities on the, basically the water systems as well. So, uh, we did include, um, more information on those types of things, uh, in this plan because we knew it was a priority for this board.
Uh, in terms of, of the 336 pages, when, when will we have that available to us and the general public?
We wanted to get it, uh, cleaned up and, and their formatting, having a few formatting issues as well, but we are trying to get that document cleaned up today. Uh, we're gonna post it on the website tomorrow. We're hoping to do that tomorrow, uh, before close of day. And then, uh, we'll email, I'll, I'll send an email out to the commissioners and the, the incoming commissioners as well for their, uh, for an official link, uh, so you can, so you can start reviewing that document.
Okay, and, and Mr. Ritchie, um, is that gonna meet the open meeting requirement to get it dissemin- disseminated both to the public and to us simultaneously?
That's all of the open meeting law requires, that it's available to the public at the same time it's available to you. So it's my understanding it's gonna be posted.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Engels? Okay. Commissioner Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, um, I don't necessarily disagree that, um, water should be an element in the master plan, um, but it's not a simple project. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. I think we're man, but mandated by SB 150 or whatever the SB was to have a water plan in 10 years. Um, and we're working towards that. Okay, there, I don't know how many water purveyors there are in Douglas County, but they're all not to get, they're, they're not all gonna be reading on this off the same line. So we need to get these people together, get that study done. Uh, that's required by SB 150, and then maybe take a look at incorporating it into the master plan. I don't disagree with that. But it's something that doesn't happen overnight, just getting, you know, 15 water purveyors around the table and say, here's what we're gonna do. It's a, it's a long project. Uh, we're not talking about a consolidation of water companies. We're talking about a plan that's gonna happen. Uh, and so we're, you know, something that we're gonna plan for in the future so that we know exactly what we have to do, just in case there's a reverberancy for water that's depleted in one area and it's, uh, available in another area. We need to have that plan. Um, but that happens to take place, uh, in my opinion, um, that's a, that's a 10-year project.
Thank you. All right. Um, then it would seem to me, uh, if there's no further comment, that we can move on, because this was for presentation only. Um, are there further comments? All right. Um, then, uh, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Delair. Thank you, Mr. Walter for being here. Um, Mr. Taylor, thank you for being here to clarify all the legal aspects. Oops, we didn't have those yet. Okay. Um, so we'll move on to item number six. Possible action: Discussion to Review and Approve Community Grant Committee's Recommendation of Awarding $146,405 of the $155,000 previously budgeted and funded from the General Fund and Social Services Fund to various applicants for FY 2020 to 2021, and utilize the remaining $8,595 to enter into a professional services contact to review and assess Douglas County's community grant program, including the policy procedures, application, and reporting process for further grant recommendations. Ms. Wood, 10 minutes.
Uh, Natalie Wood, Administrative Services Manager in the County Manager's Office for the record. Um, thank Um, thank you for the time to present today and for the opportunity to be in a part of the program again this year for my second time in the row. Um, I really enjoyed the opportunity to become more familiar with some more programs in Douglas County. Um, and we, the committee enjoyed the process um this year. We have provide a recommendation report and an allocation spreadsheet for your review and approval. Um, and I have a few things that I'd like to point out um regarding our recommendations. Um, we broke the applications into four separate categories to help kind of organize and make a recommendation for you. Um, we had a competitive program and project, a operational um application, a community partnership, and then incomplete. And then our description of how we broke those down is noted in the report. Um, so we had a total of twenty-five applications that were recommended, recommending to you today. Um, additionally, in the recommendation, we added some recommendations based on the applications, feedback from the applicants. And then by reviewing Carson City's community grant program and also the city of Riverside's community grant program. Um, these recommendations are to improve the application, you know, create some policy and procedure, create some processes for the applicant to just make it more clear and um promote the fiscal integrity of the program. Um, additionally, at the beginning of this program, uh Barry requested that we add the budget analysis, a budget request of each application. Um, we weren't able to do that based on how the application is given to us now. Um, each applicant has a different budget format. And so we weren't able to add that information in this year because we didn't get it from the applications. Um, that's an overview of kind of the changes in our recommendations for this year. So if you have any questions for me, um, I'm ready to take them.
Questions? No questions from the board? Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Walsh.
It's kind of um hard to read the, the allocation. This is a very small schedule. But I did notice that uh, the recommendation is to, for, for the Sports Aviation Foundation, um uh, a five thousand dollar recommendation. I think that's an awesome thing. I think here in Douglas County where um soaring is such a popular sport and brings in tourism. Uh, I'm very much in favor of that organization and the, the grant that we have, are hopefully going to approve for them.
Yeah, any others, Commissioner Rice?
I can, excuse me, I concur what Commissioner Walsh just said. Also, there's some, some other groups here that do a magnificent job. And uh, I'm, I'm glad that we are uh supporting these agencies. Yeah, I concur with our um, with our chairman that this is something that we need to look at. That's why I like the fact that uh they're gonna use what's left over uh to uh review and assess the, uh, the, the community grant program. So I'm, I'm in favor of this motion.
Yeah, uh, one thing that I, I, I'm not clear on in the recommendations is it, is it um th- these should be grant monies that go to each of the organizations. And it, and what we, what I see happening a lot it, in, over the years is that they have become uh an expectation by the grantee. Uh, and what it really was started out as and, and, and has morphed in many times. Um, it was to seed money to get that thing going in an organization that's new. Uh, or for a specific project that, an organization that's small and, and volunteer run, doesn't have the monies to um get that particular um activity off the ground. What we've ended up with or morphed to is that it becomes an operational expectation that each of these have it. So I would, I would encourage whoever you're gonna get to look at it. I'm not sure there is an organization that looks at community grants, but you know, certainly you'll find somebody, I'm sure. Um, I think there ought to be a time limit on this and, and you know, if you apply for the grant, you, you could be expected to get your program off the ground and funded and all that within three to five years or something. I, I don't know how that would look, but I think that's something that should be done. Otherwise, we don't spread the money around the community. We end up um doing the fifteen or twenty of the, the programs all the time. Uh, and I, I personally uh think that um we should have more emphasis on some cultural activities. Uh, we have a lot of behavioral health activities, which I believe should be funded by the county if we're ever gonna expect to really make some, some headroads in, in those, those areas. But the cultural activities don't seem to get a lot of, of uh support monetarily. And if we want to improve the culture of the community, then I think we need to look at how we're gonna do that. And I know Commissioner Ingles has taken on it as a personal issue, trying to get more filming done here. Uh, we probably need to look at how we're gonna. It, it used to be that Genoa had the symphony come down for a concert in the park on the Fourth of July. And they also did a thing in uh, in, in Christmas. Uh, maybe we need to look at how to do that. And certainly we have uh money set aside for the Carson Valley Pops, but it's probably not enough to, to really get them going. Uh, but those are the kinds of things I think we should be oriented on. So that's my suggestion. Anybody got any other ideas? Okay, not seeing any. Commissioner Ingles?
Get rid of those COVID restrictions.
Well, it, it doesn't look like it's gonna go away and I think the county manager has an update on it next, so we can talk about it then. Um, and on this current issue, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. Um, absent further discussion, I move to approve the community grant committee's recommendation of awarding, awarding one hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars of the one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars previously budgeted and funded from the general fund and social services fund to various applicants for FY twenty twenty-one. And to utilize the remaining eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars to enter into, into a professional services contract to review and assess the community grant program, including the policy and procedure, application and reporting processes, process for future grant recommendations.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, then we'll close that and ask for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays, the motion carries five oh. Thank you, Ms. Wood. We appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
And don't go away. You are the hostess for this. Uh, all right, uh, we'll move on to item seven. Uh, and I believe this is uh Mr. Cates discussing, oh, this is the VHR program. Discussion of staffing plan and creation of three new positions related to the VHR program. Mr. Cates?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this is the latest installment in our discussions on the VHR program. Uh, very particular focus in this uh agenda item to talk about the, the staffing and make a request of the board. Um, we talked about a, a preliminary budget and potential fee schedule at our last meeting. Got a lot of good feedback. I, I thought we had a great discussion. Uh, just to recap, the board, uh, well, just to recap, the VHR report recommended four new positions. Uh, the board previously approved one code enforcement officer, uh, which we are recruiting for. Um, there were also recommendations for three additional positions. And during our discussions at the last meeting, it was very clear and in, in prior meetings um, that the board wants to see uh on-the-ground enforcement uh for this program. Uh, we think that is a very urgent need. I, I agree with that. So we changed our recommendation a little bit and uh what we are recommending is three additional positions, including another code enforcement officer. Uh, we did have a counter technician in there. We removed that, replaced it with code enforcement officer, an administrative assistant to take care of the administrative tasks related to the program, and another deputy sheriff position. The deputy sheriff's position would be located in the sheriff's office, uh, um, and would be under their control. What this does is it gives them an, an FTE worth of salaries in which to allocate officers' time and would allow the sheriff to dedicate some more resources to the lake um to deal with primarily those after-hour calls related to, related to VHRs. Um, the total cost of the new positions is estimated to be a little over three hundred thousand dollars for, for year. That includes the first code enforcement officer that the board previously approved. Um, what we are asking is to create these positions now rather than later, uh, so we can get resources on this program. Um, I think what was recognized by the task force and the board has recognized that enforcement is where we are lacking the most. Um, so this helps us address this quickly. Now, we did talk about a fee schedule. We will be coming forward uh with that to, for the board to adopt at a future meeting. Uh, but the request today is to approve the three additional positions. And if, if you approve this, what we will do is um come back with a, a budget augment from greater than anticipated fund balance from, from last fiscal year. We anticipate that coming forward at the first meeting in December. And that will fund it for the half year. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total for all four positions uh for the next, basically the next six months through the end of the fiscal year. Um, we will be bringing back other pieces. Staff is working on uh some red line changes to code in order to implement the recommendations in the report. Uh, so the board will have that as a, at a future meeting as well. Um, and I think that about covers it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board members? Commissioner Ingles? And then Commissioner Walsh?
If, if I understand the proposal, um, at this juncture, I'm adamantly opposed to hiring additional staff except for code enforcement officers. Um, this is not the time to be doing that. And we have to be generating enough uh money to not only have three additional code enforcement officers, but also for the sheriff's deputy. Um, so until we get up to speed and start getting organized on this and seeing where it's gonna go, I'm adamantly opposed to hiring any additional staff under the current circumstances because we don't know what's gonna happen to the county in regard to this COVID thing, the economy and everything else. Not yet. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Walsh?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I, I was just thinking, you know, long-term, um, there ought to be some kind of sunset provision for this particular, these particular additions to our FTEs. Uh, in other words, we oughta uh, uh, review it every so often, once a year, maybe once every two years or whatever to see if now that we have a great enforcement, now that we have regulations that are in place, now that we have people who are uh complying with those regulations, do we really need these extra FTEs? So I'd like to see a sunset clause in here at some point in time.
Uh, Commissioner Rice?
I think a sunset clause is something that we can be discussing a little later down the line. Right now, we need these positions that have been uh put forth by the county manager. I get more complaints and calls and suggestions about the VHR problem than anything else. I have had at least five meetings here at the lake in the last month. Uh, I, I concur that we, we do need the enforcement officers and the sheriff department needs the uh, the, the extra body so the response can be made. And it, I've, I've looked at this program, I've discussed it with the county manager, and this program will pay for itself. Uh, this is money that in the future will not be coming out of the general fund. It'll be coming out of the uh costs. Uh, it, it'll be coming out of the money that the uh VHR owners are going to be paying for their uh, for their services and for their, for their permits. So I, I, I would like to see this agenda item approved as presented. I think it's, it's very necessary at this time and this is the first bite of the apple. And there's more to be coming uh month by month. And uh, let's get this thing taken care of because things are totally out of control.
Uh, good plea, good plea. Uh, anyone else? Any other comments? I, I uh would like to also support what Commissioner Ingles is talking about. We keep uh adding additional administrative positions and we don't know the efficacy of the enforcement procedures. I think if you create a, a position, and I spoke on the same subject the last time we talked about it. If you need to have somebody, I, I would recommend that you have a temp and then determine whether or not you need to go to full-time uh FTE. I think the other part of this is inherent with the government getting into enforcement on any entrepreneurial basis, the entrepreneur, entrepreneurs drop out. If that were the case in the VHRs, you could probably see, once we get the program up and running, people saying, hey, it's too much a hassle, it costs too much money, I'm gonna stop doing it, which may be uh to the benefit of the, the residents. Uh, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't solve the problem that we've hired full-time people and we're not getting the income to support all the full-time people that we hired. And once we get that full-time person, we just can't say, okay, fine, we don't have the job anymore. Um, and if we don't have the income, our only uh solution then is to provide general fund monies for those FTEs. I don't think we've thought about what happens if, we've only said, okay, we're gonna have more uh enforcement and it isn't gonna come as a minor uh investment. It's a, it's a fairly good investment. So Mr. Cates, do you have a plan that says if we don't make the monies that we expect, we're gonna get the additional money from something else?
Uh, for the record, Patrick Cates, uh, yeah, we've put a lot of thought into that. Um, I think um the program needs to pay for itself. Um, that's uh, that, that was the basis of the fee schedule that uh we looked at, a hypothetical fee schedule that we looked at. Uh, based those numbers on pretty conservative numbers for the number of VHRs and what that looks like. Uh, so that we could have a reasonable estimate of how much revenue that we could expect. And if we don't collect that revenue, I, I'm not gonna be looking to come back to the general fund to keep these positions going. If we don't collect that revenue, uh, we'll eliminate positions. Um, the idea is that these are funded by those fees and not the general fund. Um, you know, we, we, we wanna have a one-time allocation of general fund just to get these going. Um, so we can get the fee schedule placed and start collecting those revenues. Uh, but if long-term, we're not collecting enough money, we'll eliminate these positions for sure.
Commissioner Rice?
In talking to the people up here, in my opinion, um, getting the revenue is not gonna be a problem. The city of South Lake Tahoe and their major team are outlawing, yeah, I know it's going through the courts, but it, it looks like in the, the anti-VHR people are gonna win in court. And people are already coming over here and buying up houses. I know the one next door to me just, just sold again for the third time. And uh, it's going to be a VHR. The VHRs are moneymakers and they're not gonna squabble about having to pay the, the fees that the county's charging. They're making money hand over fist in VHRs. Uh, they can make three thousand dollars on a weekend. So uh, the, the four hundred dollars uh in the other assessments and the five dollar a night in the TOT, uh, that, that's not gonna discourage anybody from moving over here. And I'm uh interested in discussing the, the cap that we've been talking about. And I'm interested in discussing the cap that we've been talking about because the 13% seems reasonable to me. But we can't have, you know, 800, 900 VHRs over here. It'll just destroy the community. So I am very much in favor of this recommended motion as it has been put forward. And I look forward to discussion on caps at the next meeting.
Commissioner Ingles?
Well, we're getting back to the same place we were before. If we have ordinances and they're not being enforced, then it's what's the point of even having the ordinance? And we aren't even up to speed yet with the code enforcement staff that we've got. In the future, we can look at this and reevaluate it, but to build an internal little bureaucracy at this juncture is premature. We've got two code enforcement officers now and one may last six months. We don't know. But until we get up to three and we start pulling more out of the lake and see what's going on with the VHRs, it's premature to go ahead and start building all of this infrastructure in anticipation of what we think is going to materialize. So long term, we could reevaluate it at this juncture. I don't think it's the time to look at doing this, especially under the current economic situation.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the present time, we have numerous VHRs operating illegally. We need this code enforcement. We need the other positions. And nothing is going to change unless we get those bodies out there. This is very, very needed up here at the lake.
Chair? I don't disagree with that. We have to get these code enforcement people up to speed. And we're also going to have to have some of them work on weekends and after hours because this is when a lot of the problems come up. So administratively, if we don't have the code enforcement people out there, none of this matters. So right now, our thrust should be to get these code enforcement staff up to speed, find out more about what's going on. And we have the infrastructure to go ahead and handle noncompliant VHRs. That's what we have the DA's office for. So at this juncture, I think our thrust should be getting the staffing level of the code enforcement up to a minimum three people and then see what revenue we get coming in. And then look at the additional sheriff's deputy that could work on that and then go from there. But it's premature now to go and build up a little internal bureaucracy and not have the momentum. I agree that there's plenty of things that would generate this revenue, but we got to go out and catch them. So I've told you the story before. My brother in law is the chief code enforcement officer for the city of Santa Monica, California. They do not allow any VHRs, but they have three of them working undercover to smoke these people out. So but we aren't at that point yet. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I'm hung up on it still being a commercial use and zoning shouldn't allow it. But we don't need to build more government just to enable people to do things they shouldn't be doing in that zoning. That's my position.
All right. We further comments? You know, one thing that strikes me about this is that pieces that got to go in, the limitation, if we're going to have it, is it going to apply to the valley also? Are we making one one policy for the entire county? Are we going to divide it up by land use? And then we have hiring people. And we're told it's going to come out of the greater than anticipated savings, which we're going to hear about on the 30th of November, but we don't know the number. We only know that this is part of it. I really would like a presentation on the whole program and when things are going to be put into effect. And I like Commissioner Walsh's suggestion that we have some kind of reevaluation period or sunset or whatever. I understand and respect Commissioner Rice's urgency on, I have no doubt that it's a big issue for at the lake. And so here, Commissioner Ingles saying, you know, we don't want to build up a bureaucracy. It seems to me like it ought to be all in one plan and we haven't even discussed changes in that we I thought we were going to hear about on this meeting because that's what we asked for. What kind of changes are you going to be able to do quickly? And I haven't heard those and I don't think they're on the agenda to be discussed. So it seems to me that we need to see with this hope before we go forward with actually hiring people right now. We don't have the total scope. Now, that's just me. I like to see what the whole thing's going to look like before I vote. Is there a reason why we do it in this manner? Mr. Kate, Mr. Taylor, or anybody that's involved in it?
For the record, Patrick Cates. So we are working on the regulations to implement the full recommendations. That's a long process. It just takes time to go through all that. That is in progress. I think there was recognition by staff and the task force that we do not have adequate resources today for this program. We're not talking about a bureaucracy. We're talking about boots on the ground. The only position that isn't boots on the ground is administrative assistant. And, you know, our current experience, we've got less than two FTEs allocated to this program and we're not able to keep up. As far as the administrative assistant, we have historically been using temp services near full time. So that was the reason that that was in the request as well. And I understand and respect the concerns of the board about wanting to see the full program. But even without changes to the regulations, we need resources to manage this program because I think everybody recognizes it has not been being managed well historically due to lack of resources. So that's why we're bringing this forward now. And we will be coming back to the future meetings with regulatory changes and other pieces of this program. We want to bring those regulations forward as complete as possible so that it's not piecemeal. But that does take time.
So what you're seeing is you need to get the process going to hire the people because that's a long process. In the interim between actually getting a boot on the ground now and getting a boot on the ground whenever all the process is done, it takes a long lead time. And so you need to get the approval to do it first. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, sir.
And you say you do use temporary folks in the admin role? Are you looking to hire a temp? Are you looking at hiring a full time FTE right off the bat? For the
We were looking to hire a full time FTE. Our temp pool is stretched very thin, especially with all things going on with COVID and it's been difficult to maintain that service for this particular program.
Chair? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ingles.
Let's reevaluate everything once you've got three code enforcement officers in place. Right now, this county has had two code enforcement officers for the longest time off and on. And we haven't had this additional staff to support them for a number of reasons. And at this juncture, I think it's entirely premature to go and start building this up. We've got everything in place already. We work with what we've got and we get these people out in the field and start seeing where it goes because right now we don't have the horsepower. I can understand what's going on with the folks up at the lake and it's the same thing. We have ordinances, but if ordinances aren't enforced, then they're completely useless.
Problem is there's been nobody to enforce them.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rice.
I would like to make a motion.
At your pleasure.
I move that we approve creation of a code enforcement officer, an administrative assistant, and a deputy sheriff for the vacation home rental program as presented by the county manager.
Seconded. Commissioner Walsh seconded. So a motion by Commissioner Rice and a motion by Commissioner Walsh. Further discussion? Mr. Nelson, did you want to say something? Would it be appropriate to consider a temporary hire for the administrative person to be further evaluated to turn it into full time? Depending on how it goes in the first 90 days of full operation?
I would have no problem with that amendment.
Chair?
Commissioner Ingles?
I got a problem with the way this thing is being stacked. In other words, we have to take it all or nothing. And I'm of persuasion, and we've been talking about getting three code enforcement officers for about a year and all of a sudden this other stuff comes up. And so this motion says, well, we will hire another code enforcement officer and the administrative support staff and that's not right. We should already, we're already looking for a third enforcement officer. That should not be included in this agenda item. Hence, I am opposed to the way it's being structured and word and the way we're being, I don't know, pushed into doing what the county manager wants. I don't want it, not at this juncture. We need code enforcement officers, period, right now, and we haven't got them.
Mr. Cates, can you amplify on why you need an administrative person?
For the record, Patrick Cates. I don't know if it's helpful to refer to the board to page 992 of the packet that really kind of summarizes the staffing and program costs for this. So, you know, in prior conversations, I heard from board members that they wanted to see more enforcement. There was discussion about whether they should be code enforcement officers or deputy sheriffs. The recommendation in the report, which came from the task force and the technical group, was was four FTEs, a code enforcement officer, a counter technician, administrative assistant, and deputy sheriff. The board approved the one code enforcement officer. Based on the conversation we had at the prior meeting, I heard clearly that we wanted more enforcement resources, less administrative, so we shifted that, took out the counter technician, replaced it with another code enforcement officer. The administrative assistant really does the administration of the program, the paperwork, the taking in of information. You know, there's a lot of overhead that is required to administer this regulatory program. You know, I don't like overhead more than anyone else, but it's an essential part of the program unless we're going to have code enforcement officers pushing paper and not boots on the ground. I don't know if Tom or anyone else wants to elaborate on that, but that's the basis of the request.
Well, Mr. Cates, this is not the point at this juncture. How many code enforcement officers do we currently have?
We currently have two code enforcement officers that are not dedicated to VHR solely.
All right. Wait a minute. Okay, so we all agreed to get a third code enforcement officer. Is that correct?
Yes, that was approved on the 15th of October.
Okay. Now, that didn't include all of this other bureaucracy in order to do this. I mean, we've got a DA's office that can handle some things. And when somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, we have systems in place within the county to handle that. They could be incorporated with some of these other things. So we don't even have a code enforcement officer yet to go and do this and we're building all of this already. This needs to come back at a later date after we have three code enforcement officers and we see what's being generated and we start looking at a sheriff's deputy. We're getting way ahead of ourselves here.
Mr. Delair, can you amplify why we're at this point right now? I mean, I understand what Mr. Ingles is saying is we don't have the third code enforcement officer, which we authorized in October. And yet we're coming back and asking for two more and an administrative assistant. We have no experience with what that third code enforcement officer would do.
Thank you, Chairman Penzel. This is Tom Delaire for the record. Yeah, we do have currently two code enforcement officers, one of which is working on the permitting of the VHRs today and doing enforcement as well. She has been, she's been working with HDL, who has been extremely helpful in streamlining the permitting process. On our end, we still have to track attract these homes in our system. And she's been updating our system for the past probably month and a half on making sure that the permits program, that a seller program has those VHRs entered and the building department can see them. So we have some auditing capabilities now to see if those permits that are being issued for construction along with the permits for the VHR. So we do have that ability today because of her efforts. It is taken away from the enforcement side of things. And so Richard, our code enforcement senior, is out doing most of the investigations and writing the letters and trying to keep up. It doesn't seem to be slowing down. People are complaining a lot. And we do have a lot of cases outstanding that we're trying to wrap up in addition to dealing with the VHR stuff as well. We are down an administrative assistant. I don't have, he's been on leave now for since COVID hit and he's in the National Guard and I haven't seen him since April. And so we are struggling up here, trying to keep up with all of the demands of the department. And having an additional staff, we also would be, in addition to not only the VHR permits being submitted electronically, we are trying to implement an electronic plant submitter and try and get that up and running. We hope to have it up and running by December. And we're currently waiting on some credit cards, credit card hardware to be installed at the front counter and then we can get everything up and running and online. It seems to be, I don't know what the holdup is there, but we are working towards that. And then we'll need that administrative position to start disseminating the permits between all the permit texts. And that's really what this administrative position is really going to be helping. But in addition to that, they're going to be tracking all the VHR stats and permits and making sure that that program is being tracked appropriately here. In addition to that, a permit tech for the VHRs needs to be able to go up in the field and do the inspections. Right now, we're currently waiting on, or relying on Tahoe Douglas Fire, who's been doing a great job on doing those inspections. But there are a number of homeowners up there in Tahoe that tend to exaggerate a little bit on their applications as far as parking, where their bare bins is, if they have a bare bin. And we want to make sure that the permit tech issuing the permits has the ability to go up and do those inspections. And right now, we don't have time to do that. And we've been relying on Tahoe Douglas Fire to do those kinds of inspections because they are in the house, make an appointment, and actually review the facility that's being rented. And we rely on their approval in order to issue these permits. So, that would help additionally. We do have a code enforcement officer position posted. It closes on November 30th, and we're planning on doing phone interviews the following week and then probably Zoom interviews the week after that. So, hopefully by December 15th or so, we will have, we'll have, we'll have an offer going forward to IRC to be approved for a hire. So, hopefully by the first of the year, we'll have the three code enforcement officers.
So, through all that explanation, I'm getting the sense that you have to, you have to get some people in place right now, and you're doing that. But your biggest problem is administration. And I thought we hired HDL to do the whole permitting process. Now, somebody applies, they want to get it done. HDL says, okay, fine, and then I guess you would give them final approval if HDL said or recommended to you that they be approved for a permit. That's one aspect of it. Then, the other aspect of it is catching up on the permits that have already been issued. That's an administrative function. And you have an administrative person, but he or she is in the National Guard and not there. And then, you would want to hire two more code enforcement officers and a deputy and an administrative person. Seems to me like you need administrative help right now. And what we need to do is get administrative help on the ground in your office right now. And when you get the third code enforcement officer, you'd then be able to send that person out in the field, plus the one that we hired in October. So, then, there'd be two more out in the field, the one that was hired in October and the one that you're hiring in December. And with the temporary administrative help, you could get all, you could get the program all decluttered, if you will. And you've got time to do that. And that way, Mr. Rice can say, hey, we've hired two more code enforcement officers. We're hiring an administrative person temporarily to get the clutter that's backlog in the department. And then, we'll evaluate, as Mr. Ingles is talking about, the additional code enforcement officers and the deputies. And if you then prove by workload that you need an additional person to do all the administrative things for the three, well, actually, before code enforcement officers at that point, then we can go and look at what the volume of the administrivia is. But hopefully, by then, Mr. Taylor will have come up with a streamlined program for code enforcement in terms of the code that we have. So, that seems to me to be a little more reasonable approach than striking right now for more people when we haven't even got a program that can use the people that we've got. Am I making sense? No? Mr. Gates? Let Mr. Gates respond, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Ingles. Go ahead, Mr. Gates.
I just wanted to say, we have a VHR program today. We have VHR regulations today. There's a lot of good recommendations to change as regulations, but we have a program today, and we have very little allocated to it today. We have one code enforcement officer that the board approved. I just, I don't know what to say. We need the resources. We need the resource. It doesn't matter what we do at the regulations. We don't have sufficient resources for the regulations we have today to be able to implement them. I don't know. I don't know where the board wants to go with this.
Okay. Mr. Ingles, go ahead.
I get where the chair is going. You know, we get to a certain point, and what do we need HDL for?
Yeah, right.
We should be able to do everything that they do, and then you can have your own staff, and you can direct them. And so, you know, we've got to fish or cut bait here. And you want to cut HDL? Okay. Then, we'll start staffing up, and you run this department. It's just that simple. We can't be all things to all people. And I'm all for enforcement. I've been that way since the beginning. But my argument has always been from the get-go, if you don't have the code enforcement people, then nothing, the rules, the regulations, they don't matter because they can't be enforced. So, what does HDL do that we can't do ourselves?
Commissioner Ingles, this is Tom Delair for the record. HDL, we contracted with HDL to contact or to provide a permit link on the website that the applicant submits all the information, and there is a lot of information. They need to do a parking diagram. They have to get their inspection from Tahoe Douglas Fire. There's, they've got to have and provide some documentation on where they're providing the permits within the home. And then, and they collect all of that information and make sure that it's in a bundle that then is sent to Douglas County that we go through and approve or deny those permits. And if we deny them, they go back to HDL. They get the right information or additional information that we require, and then they resubmit those, that permit to us to approve. And then, what we're doing is taking that permit and entering it into our Acela program so that it can be tracked within our own database. Because this is an HDL database that we don't, we don't have access to the data without getting it from them by an Excel file. So, that's how we've been communicating back and forth as far as the permits go and auditing our records that we're entering into our database so that we can have that information at our fingertips. And then, so right now, what HDL is doing is collecting those permits for $15. That's what it's costing us to have them do that application process and send it to us to review and approve. And I think right now, it's a wonderful deal for the county. It's taken a load off of staff, and they can still focus on, you know, she does still focus on code enforcement items and still addresses those issues. And she's able to handle that load today. And we're caught up now on the database stuff, and it seems to be moving forward. But we still are going to need in the future a permit tech or an admin person to handle those permits, to manage those as they're coming in so that code enforcement can do code enforcement things and not permitting for the VHRs. And I was under the impression we were only getting one additional code enforcement officer, so a total of three that we were trying to schedule so that we had a people, a code enforcement officer that's available on the weekends that can go and actually drive around and monitor those rental units.
Well, that's, you know, this is what the chairman and I were alluding to. If you're going to start building an internal organization to handle all this, then what do we need HDL for?
We don't have the personnel to handle it.
Well, that's right. But, you know, right now, we've got to get code enforcement people. And until we do that, everything's really a moot point because we can't enforce the codes that we've got.
And then, HDL is really beneficial, it's really beneficial to have HDL issuing the permits so they know which individuals are permitted and that they, if they are not permitted and they're operating and they find evidence that there is an advertisement for a house up there at Tahoe, then what happens right now is HDL tags that unit and then prepares a letter that then is sent to our staff for code enforcement, and then we take it, print it out, sign it, you know, and then send it off certified mail to the property owner to inform them that they're operating without a permit. And so, those things are happening today, and we are keeping up with that demand as far as I'm aware. And we have had a few, you know, I think two of them in the last couple of months that have been strung out, and I don't know where the status of those are right now, but I can find out and report back to you if you'd like. But we are capturing those things, and I think having HDL issuing these permits, it does help on their end on auditing the TOTs at the end of this, at the end of the year as they renew, and ensuring that everybody is operating the way the code and the Nevada state regulations require. And I think that's what's really beneficial for having HDL in this process.
Yeah, I have a question. We put a fine, a $5,000 fine for non-compliant VHRs. How many fines have we collected?
From since I've been here, Commissioner Nelson, it's, I think we're on our third one. We have two outstanding, I believe we have two outstanding.
Okay, and I hear all the time, there's a lot of people up there operating without permits, but we've only had three fines in, what, a year and a half, two years?
Yeah, yeah. I hear it too, and I don't, I don't, yeah, we need to know where these locations are.
Chair?
Mr. Ingles, please.
Mr. Delair, do people from the lake that complain about the VHRs contact you directly?
Not me directly, sir.
There's a call-in line?
Yeah, well, I find that they use emails a lot more, and I'm sure that Commissioner Rice finds the same thing. This is, here again, we've got to get the code enforcement in place. That's the priority. Everything else is ancillary. At this juncture, I continue to be of the persuasion that all of these other administrative things are premature.
Okay. It is, by my watch, it's 3:04. I would suggest before we call for a vote on this that we take a break and kind of think this over and come back in about 10 minutes and see what we've got. Any objections to taking a break now? All right, then we'll take a break and be back at 3:15. Commissioners to show back up. Mr. Kates, good to see you again. Mr. Delair. Got, uh, Mr. Ingles, and then we need Mr. Walsh.
So during this wind, my neighbor has this small swimming pool and the cover blew off. Must have flown all the way over his house like a big sail. Came down in our back pasture, up against the fence, broke the fence and just stopped right there. Nobody got hit.
The pool over to you, huh?
Yeah.
And Mr. Walsh, give him another minute. So. He's not muted, so. Well, let's, uh, start back up and Mr. Walsh can join us. Let the record reflect that. Uh, for the five commissioners are back, Mr. Walsh will be joining us. Hopefully.
It's New York time.
Um, I'd like to start it off, Chairman.
Um, certainly, Mr. Ingles, go ahead.
In, in regard to this, um, Mr. Kates, you're just asking us to approve this. Well, I really don't know what's going on and maybe we need some pro forma financials and include the cost of HDL and what kind of revenue we need to at least break even on this whole endeavor because I have no idea. And, uh, we get bits and pieces, but, uh, we, we need it more. This is like a business plan. And we need to see how it works. And if, if we're going to do this, uh, we need some, we need some financials on it. Thank you.
Oh, if, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please.
That's what's presented on page 992. Uh, we spent, uh, quite a bit of time in the last meeting going over, uh, the potential costs for the program and, um, what revenue we'd need to generate. We went through a, a potential fee schedule to fund that. Um, as you can see on page 992 in your packet, we're talking about a, a full program budget of about $554,000. Uh, those would be future costs in future years. Um, so we have presented that. Um, if I could just talk a little bit more about HDL, uh, maybe that would help a little bit. I, I, I pulled their contract and HDL does multiple things for the county. Uh, the biggest thing they do for us is collect TOT, which is not really part of this discussion at all. But in relation to VHRs, you know, we, we just got them on board, um, a few months ago. Um, they're still converting their database. Um, they have stood up the database for the public can access and look up VHRs. But fundamentally, if, what they are doing, they're charging us $15 per permit. It doesn't amount to a lot. The maximum cap for the contact, contract is $22,000. But fundamentally, what they're doing is kind of two things. One is setting up database and collecting all the information through that database for VHR permits for new and renewal permits. Um, there, they are, uh, in addition to that, they also uh, will do some of the research on VHRs that are not permitted. They're going to scan Airbnb and sites like that. Um, this is some of the things that hosts used to do for us and try to come up and identify those ones that are not registered. Um, yeah, there's a few other things, but it's a very limited scope of work for a relatively small amount of money. Um, the administrative assistant, there's multiple things that they would do that, that Tom talked about, but they would be the, really the main person that would be working with HDL on a day-to-day basis. Oh, I forgot, HDL is going to man the, uh, complaint lines, which can be email, phone, uh, I think they'll even take fax. Um, but once they get that, they need to route it to somebody. And the administrative assistant would be the key liaison to get that information routed to the code enforcement officers so that they could go out and, and follow up on this stuff and put boots on the ground. Um, and they would also compile the programmatic reports, um, so that we can report back to the board and give you good information about what's going on in the program. If there's paperwork that needs to be filed, uh, letters generated, the administrative assistant would help do that so that the code enforcement officers can spend as much time in the field, um, as possible. Um, so I don't know if it wasn't directly your question, but hopefully that gives you a little better feel of what role HDL plays versus the staffing that, that we are asking for. And again, the administrative assistant is the only thing we're asking for here that isn't boots on the ground, but they're a pretty key piece, uh, to keep in the program running going forward.
Well, I don't dispute any of that. But I say let's give it at least a quarter, get another code enforcement officer hired and then revisit expanding the administrative side of monitoring all this.
Okay. How do you feel about, uh, the deputy also? You want, you want to go out and start?
Well, yeah, I think that that's a, a vital component and that's not our department. Um, but yeah, we should throw that in there as a cost item. And it's essential to have a sheriff who can go and enforce the law. Now, on the other side, we're going to enforce code. So, um, that should be included. Yes, I agree.
I'm trying to work out a compromise here. Uh, so I, I heard you say that, um, we, we should recruit first the code enforcement officer, the additional code enforcement officer and the deputy. And then we should take a, a quarter after we've hired them to evaluate the necessity of having a administrative person hired. Um, is that essentially?
Yeah, but this has to be done in steps. I mean, we could go ahead and just do it all at once, one time. Um, but get this third code enforcement officer hired, see what kind of, you know, revenue, uh, we're going to be generating. And then give it some time and then go and get a sheriff's deputy and talk with the sheriff about that. Uh, and, and they're essential. But there's going to be a lot of costs involved with these people because a lot of this work is going to have to be done on weekends and in the evening. So you're going to have OT.
Unless that's his shift, you know, his shift is in weekends and, you know.
Yeah, you got that.
We'll let the sheriff work that out. Um,
Yeah.
What, it, it's going to take some time. If we say go ahead and hire, um, an additional code enforcement officer, they still haven't hired the one from October yet. So it's going to take, you know, probably 60, maybe even 90 days to hire an additional code enforcement officer. And it's going to take at least that long to hire another deputy or have the monies, uh, available for another deputy. So let's say that, uh, if we make the decision to do that, it's going to be 90 days from now. And we take the code enforcement officer they hire on the 15th, uh, and allow them to hire a temp, a temp so we can get a code enforcement officer that was hired previously out in the field. So then we would have two more, uh, code enforcement officers out in the field. And that program would, would, uh, direct whether or not we need the additional code enforcement officer and get the deputy. And that could be reevaluated. And perhaps what we do is have it reviewed by the IRC uh, on, um, a monthly basis and then come back to the board with a request to further fund those, those suppositions. But we authorize them to recruit for them now so we can have people lined up in, in a position so that we could put them to work if, if the, the next board wants to, uh, fund it completely. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, the way the timeline is being structured. I, I'm here again. Get the code enforcement officer and then we go from there.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kates, let me get to Mr. Walsh and then I'll be back to you.
Well, a couple of things. Number one, we're, we're going to be running right up against the, one of the highest VHR use seasons, uh, or, excuse me, over Thanksgiving, Christmas or whatever, there's going to be a lot of activity. But my question is, don't we have a, uh, don't we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Can I call the question?
You're going to call the question?
Yes.
You're right. Um, let it end discussion. We'll call for a vote. Um, uh, and there, Mr., at one point, Mr. Rice accepted a, uh, an amendment that I proposed. Remember? And that was kind of scale it. Um, that I could ask the clerk to reread the, the motion. Ms. Balda, are you there?
Somebody's mic'd on. They have excellent voices.
Ms. Balda? Nikki, uh, who's taking notes? Hello?
This is, this is Kathy. I know Tanya is, but she's upstairs. I can go see, um, she might be having trouble moodying herself. Um, and I haven't been paying close enough to attention to the amendment to be able to repeat it. So let me go see, just a second.
Okay. Well, uh, sit and wait because we had the question called. Uh, Mr. Kates, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, I know you're in the middle of a motion, but just one observation. Uh, so we have a code enforcement officer recruitment in progress. If you were to today approve another code enforcement officer, we'd be able to hire two people off that one recruitment without any other delay. Just an observation.
I'm here, Chairman Pennzoil. This is Tanya Balda.
Thank you, Tanya. Um, go ahead.
Sorry. The motion I had was to approve a code enforcement officer, a deputy sheriff, and then you added to hire an admin, temp, and in 60 days review for a permanent hire.
Okay. So, uh, is everybody clear on what the motion is with the amendment? Okay. And any further comments? None? Uh, Mr. Rice?
Mr. Kates?
Yes, sir.
Wes, did you? Wes, you were cut out. Can you repeat what you're saying, Mr. Rice?
I said, uh, just calling your attention that Mr. Kates had his hand up and wanted to address this.
Well, theoretically, we're in the middle of a vote, so we can't, can't, we can't take any further information because as he called the question. So we've got to call for the vote. I just want to make sure everybody understands what they're voting on. So, um, questions on what you're voting on? All right, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, all those nays, any nays, say nay.
Naye.
Says three to two on it. Then the motion goes down. So we need to talk about an additional motion. Mr. Kates, go ahead.
Uh, uh, my question is moot now. I was just seeking clarification on what a temp administrative assistant meant.
That means it's not a full-time. I don't know. But that's somebody you can get, uh, you can keep and if you need to, to turn them into a permanent, you could, you could change them over to a permanent FTE. In my view, that's what a temp is.
Okay. A temp to me is a contractor, but that's why I was clarifying it. But the motion failed anyway, so. But the motion failed anyway, so.
Okay, so that's, what we can work out as a compromise.
If I may, Chairman, can I ask a question?
Mr. Ingles.
Uh, you have, Mr. Kates, you have two candidates for code enforcement that are available at this juncture.
Uh, we have an open recruitment. I don't know the total number of applicants at the moment. Uh, my only point was is if you approved an additional code enforcement officer, we can hire two people off that list instead of just one.
So that by December, you could have two more code, code enforcement officers?
Right.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that because uh, if we have, I don't know, six, seven hundred homes up there, uh, that's a lot to cover. And by having four code enforcement officers, um, that may pay for itself. So let's uh, let's reevaluate that. If you would, bring it back as another agenda item to hire a fourth code enforcement, code enforcement officer. Uh, if you can R O I the uh, the position, uh, let's evaluate that.
I think this is something that we can do right now. We don't need to wait.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue is that um, if we allow them to hire an additional one, that would be the fourth uh, code enforcement officer. You gotta bear in mind too, that.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Dave, just let me finish.
I would like to make a motion.
Dave, Dave, let him finish, please.
Okay.
Uh, uh, we gotta bear in mind that the two code enforcement officers that have been historically part of uh, code enforcement don't do just code enforcement at the lake. They do code enforcement throughout the county. You know, so if we approve an additional code enforcement officer off the recommended list that we were just talking about, we would have two that are primarily dedicated to the lake and V H Rs. Okay? So Dave, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the creation of a code enforcement officer per our discussion.
To bring the total to, to four code enforcement officers. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to hire an additional code enforcement officer to bring the total to four. And that could be done by December. I'm elaborating on what the motion is saying, okay? But the motion is by what Dave has said. Um, and it's seconded by Commissioner Ingles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, so that, that deals with the code enforcement officer. Do we want to deal with a recommendation administrative assistant? And the deputy sheriff at this point, or do we want to wait and see what happens?
Uh, I would recommend we wait and see how this works out for maybe a meeting or two at least after we get them hired.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Rice, this is definitely in your bailiwick. Uh, what's your opinion?
I, I think, excuse me, I think that uh, we should consider hiring a temporary administrative assistant so that the uh, the new code enforcement officers won't be saddled with all that paperwork in the office.
Uh, Mr. uh, Kates, if you hire a temporary, do you need our approval for a temporary?
Uh, for the record, Patrick Kates, talking about adding a position, we need board approval. I think that'd be true, temporary or not.
Okay. Okay, I, I am of the persuasion of Mr. Ingles and running up the administrative folks. But I'd like to get some input from you about the necessity of that person after we've had the two code enforcement officers hired. You know, um, so uh, since they'll be hired in December, my guess is they probably won't come to work until January. Um, I would recommend that you come back to the board in January or February. Um, it'll be a new board anyway and, and make a recommendation on the administrative person. Um, Mr. Rice, would that work in, in your evaluation?
Well, I, I think it's really necessary that we bring somebody on board now so that they're not doing the paperwork, but I can live with, I can live with it. I would like to see the whole program moving forward, uh, to get the, get the emails off on my back. And the telephone calls at three o'clock in the morning, but uh, I'll, I'll take what I can get.
Well, um, we won't really know anything until after January for sure, when the code enforcement officers go to work. Um, how much administrivia goes along with it.
Um, I think Mr. Delair can answer that question.
Well, do you have it? An evaluation of how much time they would spend? Would they spend one quarter of their time doing administrative stuff? Half their time, three quarters, all their time doing administrative stuff? Mr. Delair?
Are you referring to the code enforcement officers doing admin stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I believe, I would say probably a third at least. Uh, to come in, they have to go out in the field, meet with the, meet with the complaintant, uh, come back and write a letter. Um, a lot of times they deal with Mr. Taylor. And then, and then they prepare a letter and uh, and then send it out. So the admin, the admin position would be very helpful in keeping those guys out in the field and uh, and, and doing all the investigation and, and the admin person creating those letters.
Well, you know, part of this is uh, my guess is that code enforcement officers don't like to do paperwork. Which I, I don't blame them, but um, it, I don't think that we need to provide a person that does all their paperwork for them. You know, uh, paperwork comes with every job. Uh, and, and we don't have a real good handle of how much paperwork is required. You know, it would seem to me if they gotta write a letter, they write a form letter saying, hey, you're in violation of yatahe and yatahe, you know? Um, how much of that can you automate?
It's automated as much as we can. Each, each complaint is unique in itself, whether it's noise or sound. I mean, we could, we can create noise one specifically, but usually along with that, there's bears or something else along, alongside of that noise complaint. So uh, they're, they have to modify the letter specific to each complaint. And then, and then it gets printed and signed, and then there's the paperwork of, of, you know, you fill out the green card and put on the envelope and send it. Um, so I mean, there's, it, it just takes time to, to do all that and then receive all the phone calls and, and respond, uh, you know, we try and keep, keep them out in the field as long as possible is what, what the goal is.
Well, we're hiring, or we're buying new vehicles for them, so they got four-wheel drive and uh, sunroof, you know, and uh.
Throw that in motion.
Seems to me that, that uh, part, part of doing your job as an enforcer is doing paperwork. I mean, the deputy writes a ticket. It's a pain in the neck. I, um, I'd like some evaluation period of exactly what they're doing and uh, how, how we're going about it, um, before commit to some administrative folks. You have one administrative person. Why can't you get a temporary right now to uh, fill that, backfill that position while that administrative person's on, in the national bar?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kates?
Um, I think uh, the board approving two code enforcement officers, one's in October and the one now is a great first step and it'll do a lot to help the program. And if the pleasure of the board is to wait and evaluate the situation, um, I, I think that's fair. We can work with that. Um, I, I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, we'd like everything at once, but um, totally understand the concerns of the board and, and we can work with that. I think we could do a lot of things with two new code enforcement officers. Um, and we still are going through a process with H D L of refining their programs as well. It'll give us a little bit of time to sort that out and we can come back with a better um, justification for administrative resources if that's what we need.
That's great. Thank you for that. And Mr. Rice, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps to help out with uh, the complaints, we could list uh, Mr. Delair's home phone number and that will take some of the pressure off.
My, my home doesn't have a phone number.
He's never there anyway.
I'm at the office, just call me here.
Yeah, just call me here. Uh, well, I think the other thing you can do also is make sure H D L is vitally involved in taking all the complaints.
And they are.
Yeah, they should be. I don't know why they're calling Commissioner Rice. And H D L should be like in big neon signs out there and call these people for complaints, unless they're not responding properly.
Okay.
John, the problem is that uh, at three o'clock in the morning, if the sheriff is busy, there's nobody to respond. So frustration, they pick up the phone and hello.
Yeah, up in your neighborhood, oh yeah, phone number here, call him.
Yeah, right. I'll run right out in my pajamas and take care of that.
Yeah.
I, I do think that hiring a deputy i- is a real critical part of this process.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know how that's gonna fend out as we go forward. And if, if you, in discussions with the sheriff, uh, you see that, that that's a real critical issue, um, I'd be willing to uh, uh, support a, an agenda item to discuss that further.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, and so then uh, is uh, is the board satisfied with the direction we've created? And any additional questions, comments?
Sure, and thank you.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to item number nine, uh, eight?
Eight.
For presentation only, presentation of the monthly update to the Board of County Commissioners on the impacts of coronavirus on Douglas County, including COVID nineteen data, state directives, economic indicators, operations and impacts on county revenues and operations. Mr. Kates?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to open some things up here. Give me just one second. Okay, um, so uh, there's been a lot of things that have happened since our last meeting and I, and I wanna kind of focus on what's going on um, with our um, COVID numbers in the county um, and some developments that have happened regarding the, the governor's office. Um, I did provide some supplemental material. Uh, I provided a White House report. Um, I'm not gonna talk too much about that. Um, uh, but I also sent to you today uh, Douglas County COVID nineteen assessment and action plan that was presented to the state uh, COVID task force this morning. Um, going back to the tenth, uh, Governor Sisalak held a press conference, widely covered in the press, I'm sure you're all aware of that. He talked about uh, where our COVID numbers are going. Cases are increasing throughout the state. Uh, there is a lot of concern about the impacts on the healthcare system. Um, there are a lot of hospitals that are getting near or at capacity in terms of beds and ICU beds. It really varies by facility. Um, here in the county, uh, Carson Valley Medical Center is doing pretty, pretty good. Um, but there's a lot of strain particularly in Reno. And um, you know, we're, we're a feeder to, to Reno and places like Renown. Uh, Renown Health uh, just opened their garage facility. This was, I guess you'd call it a makeshift ward, uh, where they have a bunch of beds that they built uh, in the spring in anticipation of a COVID surge. They have not needed it until now. Now they need it. They are putting COVID patients in it. Um, and that's happening across the state. There's a particularly large spike going on in Washoe County, um, that is starting to strain resources. Now, there are always demands for these types of beds during flu season. Um, but from what I understand, uh, what, what they're seeing right now is usually what they see in January um, in terms of need for beds. Um, and a lot of that's flu. It's not all COVID, but the two combined um, are, are, there's a lot of concern about it putting strain on, on healthcare resources. So what the governor talked about on the tenth was just sort of reiterating the need for people to follow uh, CDC guidelines and state directives. He did not issue any new directives. Uh, I would call it a plea to the public um, to do the right thing, limit social gatherings, wear masks, all, all of that stuff. Um, he did say that he would be evaluating the situation over the next two weeks. Um, and that if we don't start changing that trajectory, um, that uh, more directives uh, may be forthcoming. Um, meanwhile, I, I reported at our last meeting that our COVID numbers um, are getting to the point where some of our indicators are uh, getting into the uh, in, into the red zone, uh, where we'd be flagged by the state. And the state has three criteria, uh, one of which is the uh, average number of tests per day. Uh, the other is cases per one hundred thousand and the other is the uh, test positivity rate. Uh, so we have been uh, flagged by the state for two of those three indicators. It all go into a little bit more in just a second. Um, and uh, I was contacted by the state on Monday requesting that we complete this assessment and action plan to be submitted to the task force today, this morning, uh, which I did present to them. Uh, and like I said, I mailed this to the commissioners uh, earlier today. Um, it, it'll be uploaded to supplemental. I'm sorry, it didn't come any sooner, but it was a very last minute request from the state and we just got it wrapped up uh, last night. Um, but if I could just start showing you where we're at with our COVID numbers. Okay, so I am at uh, Carson City Health and Human Services website uh, for COVID. So for the Quad County as a, as a whole, uh, they've had a total of two thousand seven hundred ninety-three cases. Seven hundred and eighteen of those are active. There have been twenty-seven deaths in the Quad County region. Uh, now, uh, we're held to our own standard and our own metrics as a county. Um, so from Carson City Health and Human Services, uh, this was updated uh, just last night. We had a total of five hundred and one cases. In fact, this is more updated than the report I put together. Uh, total of five hundred and one cases. Uh, most of those are recovered. We have thirty-two that are currently active. Now, we've been bouncing around the twenties to thirty range of active cases for the last, oh, I'd say a couple of months. Uh, and we have had two, two deaths in, in the county. Now, I want to take you to the state's metrics where this is what they're really judging us by. Um, so let me take you to the county tracker. Okay, assume everybody can see that and uh, hopefully it's not too small. I did provide a document that gives you the link to these websites so that you can look at it on your own if you'd like to. Uh, the first uh, metric is tests per day for, per one hundred thousand. We actually been doing well in that metric. That's not one of the ones we're being flagged for. We've been doing good since mid-October. Uh, we were not having enough testing done in around September, late August, early October. Uh, but we really stepped up some of our uh, public service announcements and worked with Carson City Health and Human Services to kind of bury the testing locations. And uh, we have since been doing well and we're not flagged for that metric. So uh, so far, so good um, on that one. Now, cases per one hundred thousand. You can see Douglas County, we had historically throughout this been doing well. We really didn't have that many overall cases, but you can see the last three weeks, uh, we have jumped up quite a bit in the number of, of cases that we're seeing. Although we only have thirty-two active right now, the number of new cases has increased quite a bit. Now, we're also getting recoveries, which is why that active number is staying fairly static. But we're definitely seeing more cases in the county, uh, people testing for that. Now, part of that is correlated with the fact that we're doing more testing, right? Um, as I showed you on the other tab. Um, and if you go to the test positivity. you on the other tab. And if you go to the test positivity rate, and this is where it, I think, starts to get concerning for Douglas County, our positivity rate has been very low throughout this emergency. The goal is to keep it under 8%. Well, you can see for the last three weeks, we've jumped up quite a bit. We're at 13.4% currently. So those are the reasons that we were flagged by the state, and that's why we were requested to do the report. Now, if you look at, we go back to the county tracker overall, you can see almost every county is flagged at this point. Only Mineral, Pershing, and Story County are not hitting those metrics where they're flagged and have to provide a report to the COVID Task Force. So this was our first time going to the task force and doing this report. Every county has been coming every time they've had a, a meeting like weekly to give updates. Our report was accepted by the task force. They did have some comments about enforcement activities, or remediation activities, as they called it. There's definitely a push from the state to have the local government do enforcement activities to try to enforce COVID directives. Most of the rurals are doing very little of that. That was noted by the committee. Didn't get a whole lot of pushback. They just said, it looked like that we were very much heavy in public service announcements and disseminating information, but they felt that it was really important that there was some more enforcement. There are a few things that we are doing that do relate to enforcement. For instance, if people call the Carson City Health and Human Services hotline, and they report an instance where it may be work-related or something that an employer is doing, they are referring those to OSHA, or follow up with OSHA. Another thing that they are doing for us in terms of enforcement is part of our contract with Carson City Health and Human Services is environmental health. That is the inspections for restaurants and places that are selling food. As a component of that work, they do go through and do some checks for COVID. If they find that businesses aren't in compliance with state directives related to COVID, they do some education with them, and if it's problematic, they refer it to OSHA. We did talk about some of the other things that the county is, is doing. I know the sheriff's office has talked to businesses when they get, receive complaints. They're not issuing any kind of citations, but they, they will educate them. I know in community development, they've been handing out COVID information. During the summer, Tom Delair put, put together a whole package for the VHRs mandating they follow COVID guidelines, and that they put COVID information in VHRs, and that they're responsible for COVID compliance for their visitors. Also, Social Services is, is doing a lot to educate seniors. You know, most of our in-person senior services have been suspended, but they're, but they're disseminating a lot of information as well. In terms of the things that we have been doing in the county since the governor's press release and these numbers started increasing, we put out a press release on Monday. I believe you were all copied on that. I kind of went through some of these numbers. And really, again, the biggest concern is the pressure that we're seeing on our healthcare system. It is not at, at a critical juncture yet, but all the hospital administrators are very concerned if that's where it's heading over the, over the coming weeks. There's a lot of concern about that. I do know that Carson Valley Medical Center requested and is receiving a, what would you call it, a mobile hospital, it's a trailer, that they can use for additional bed space. So, you know, they're anticipating exceeding their capacity. They haven't got there yet, but that, that is the big concern. And I think that's really important. You know, it was, it was very difficult to get people to follow state directives when we had the kind of numbers that we've been seeing for months, very low. And, you know, compared to other counties, our numbers are still low, but they're, but they're heading in the wrong direction. And if you look around at what other states are doing, I think that focus on hospital capacity is very important and smart. You know, states that are red states, those seem to be the metrics they are looking at. Texas, for instance, they just said they're not going to do any more lockdowns. They're looking at hospital capacity. Last night, I watched a video clip of the governor of South Dakota. They don't have any lockdowns. They don't even have a mask mandate. They're just asking people to do the right thing. But what they're looking at isn't testing. What they're looking at is hospital capacity. And, and that's why there's heightened concern now. There's a ton of information in the, in the action plan and assessment report. And again, I'm sorry that wasn't disseminated sooner. I'm going to make sure that gets on our website, and we'll send out a leak. I want to make sure the public can see it. We will be asked to come back as long as we keep hitting these two, two metrics where we're flagged, to come back to the task force. Their next meeting is to be determined due to the holidays, so I'm not sure when that's going to be. But, but there are opportunities to provide updates to that as we go. The other thing I wanted to say, you know, the governor, he did talk about seeing how things go for the next two weeks. Well, two weeks will be next week. I think it is widely anticipated that there will be some announcement early next week before Thanksgiving, possibly further directives. There's been a lot of rumors that he's going to do some kind of lockdown. I don't know if that's the case. There was a comment made at the task force meeting today about the lack of enforcement at the county levels, and a comment that there would have to be some recommendation to the governor to consider statewide measures since the counties weren't doing a lot of that. And that's kind of it in its totality. I did not pull together any financial numbers, some of those other things I've presented before. There's been a lot of moving parts here in the last 10 days or so, as we've tried to respond to these changes in conditions. And with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cates. Appreciate the update. You might stop sharing the screen so we could go back to being big people. Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Ingles?
Mr. Case, out where I live, about the only people I associate with are horses. And if my wife is out of town for like a week or two, and I'm the only one in the house, do I have to wear a mask?
They're going to require OSHA to check you out. Now, we know you're not doing it, and you're good.
I'm not getting that close to the horses. I give them a carrot.
Any other questions or comments? I got my, my perennial question here. You know, if we're concerned about testing, why don't we have our own testing equipment?
Well, why, why get tested if you don't think you have this thing? I mean...
Well, that was a, you know, that's an excellent point, John, because what's happened is that they have found, Elko reported on this, that people are reluctant, especially seniors, to get tested if they don't have any symptoms. And they don't want to go through the five days of isolation and then 14 days of, of quarantine, because you got to wait some time for the, the test results to come back. And so people are reluctant. And what we need is a quick test, and we need that capability here. And we're going to need, this is not going to be the first time we're going to need laboratory assistance. We've got the money to do it. We should get the lab equipment bought so we can proceed down that road. And eventually, we could be doing DNA testing. But we, we're not going to get anywhere if we don't start somewhere. And, and I, I think it's just a travesty that we have not purchased equipment and trained people up. We got the money. I don't understand reluctance.
I couldn't agree with you more, Barry. I mean, I think it's a great idea. Why are we, why don't we have our own facility? We've got the money, let's do it. What, why, I don't know what the, maybe Patrick can elaborate what the possible hangups are, but if we have the money and, and we can do it, why don't we do it?
So there's a few things, for the record, Patrick Cates. No, I'm not sure where it's at in the process, but I know Carson Valley Medical Center was submitting some requests related to lab equipment for testing, to pay for that out of care's money. I haven't seen that come through the other end yet, but I know that's in the works. Actually, the testing is improving. The turnaround time from the state health lab has dropped quite a bit. There was some information shared today. It was a, it was like a seven-day lag, and that's dropped down to like four to five days. Also, the state is working on a contract with Quest to do some of that testing and divert that away from the state labs. I do know that Carson City Health and Human Services is actively pursuing that to get some more testing capacity. But again, we're doing good on the testing metric currently. Our, our problem is positivity and the total number of cases.
Well, and the lag, the lag between testing and result. You know, they, they just announced they got a half an hour test that you can do at home. But of all things, they made it a prescription. Give me a break. If people want to know, they need to know. And it shouldn't be by prescription. I don't understand why that's that way. And moreover, it's our people that we want to get tested. And once we have, what's the total universe of people that are infected, then we have a better way of planning to, to work with that. Are we going to need six of these trucks that Carson Valley Medical Center is on order to treat patients? Are we only going to need one? They're all shooting in the dark because you don't know what the universe of people is that you, you're going to have to treat. And we got the capability now to get that universe. But we have a reluctance, or we have a mandate from the Quad Counties that we can't do testing. I don't know which one it is. But when we're, when we're subject to the whims and wills of other people, we can't expect to meet all the criteria that the governor's sending out. He can send down every OSHA person he has, but we can't influence the system. So he wants us to enforce what? The mandate to wear a mask, which hasn't come out? You know, this is a crazy system that we got. They talk about within, within Nevada, we got three health districts, Quad County, and Washoe, and Clark County. The other two counties have their own testing system. They're not dependent, the state lab.
That's not correct. Clark and Washoe use the state lab.
Marilyn Kirkpatrick was saying that they do their own testing at their facility.
So that's the, that's the rapid test. Carson City Health and Human Services has the same test capability. They do rapid tests. The problem with the rapid test is the accuracy is very poor. So if they get a positive rapid test, that's considered inconclusive. They have people isolate, but they follow up with the normal test to confirm it. So we have the same capabilities as Clark and Washoe currently through Carson City Health and Human Services.
That's not what Marilyn was saying, but nonetheless, Mr. Ingles.
Chair, you, you got a point. And the thing that just baffles me in general about this, you know, there, there's a song, "Everything I Like Is Killing Me." You know, I like my whiskey, and I like a burger, and all of that. And you look at these incredibly dysfunctional, disease-ridden homeless populations in different locations, and they don't seem to be getting much COVID. It's just bizarre.
Yeah. I, I think, yeah, I've said it all. All right. Anybody else got a comment? Don't feel strongly about it?
If, if I could, sir, I was going to invite Jeanne Freeman from Carson City Health and Human Services to come to the next meeting and kind of do, do a deeper dive into the science and the testing, if that would please the board.
Chairman, an invite to go to a restaurant with Gavin Newsom, you may want to turn it down.
He'll be all over the Record Courier.
Yeah, John, I've been to that restaurant once. I wouldn't go back again.
Is that right?
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate the advice. Anything else, Mr. Cates?
No, that's it, sir.
Okay. And then, I would add one, one point to this, and that is, I think that if Ms. Freeman comes, or Dr. Freeman comes, one thing that I think she should really cover is the distribution of vaccines once we get them. How that's going to work.
Very good. I, I do know a little bit about that. The state has a distribution plan. They're requiring every county to submit a plan about how they'll distribute vaccines. The state reports that Carson City Health and Human Services was all over it. They're approved for the Quad County and Clark and Washoe. None of the other counties are approved yet. They're talking about beginning distribution in December. There's supposed to be some more information forthcoming, and hopefully we'll know more at the next meeting, and she can give you a fuller assessment of how that's going to work.
Yeah, and I think we need to know if it's the Pfizer A and B vaccine, where you got to have A and then you have B. What, what would be the process for that? Not only that, but who the priorities for, and where will we be doing it?
Sure.
You know, I can envision a long line of cars. People that don't want to get tested would, would probably want to get the vaccine. All right. Gentlemen, you got anything else? Any other ideas? Okay. Then we'll move on for presentation only. Item number nine, reports, updates from county commissioner members concerning various boards and/or commissions that they may be member of or liaison to, or meetings, functions that they have attended. Who, who wants to start?
I'll, I'll start.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, last week I went to the, or I didn't go. We had the Hollywood Squares NMDA Zoom meeting, and apparently there's a well-financed real estate outfit from back east that came out and bought the railroad yards in Fernley. And I kept asking, well, what about water? Never got a response. But one of the other things, and the top five things, and the, and the fifth thing that they were working on is getting the production companies up in this area, and they're, they're working with the state and the Nevada State Film Commission. And so they're pushing it. They've seen that it can work. We'll see what happens.
Mr. Rice?
Okay, I have, interestingly, tomorrow morning, I have two meetings having to do with transportation at Lake Tahoe. The first one is the South Shore Transit Management Association, followed by TTD. And right now, they are trying to figure out how they are going to fund the transportation programs that they want to put in place. And since it became obvious that Douglas County will not participate in or approve the One Tahoe program that they came up with, that they are now having to investigate other funding methods. And I, I believe that, I, I can't recall how Washoe went on that, on that program, but I know that in, those that live on the Nevada side, up here at the lake, I have only found a couple of people that were in favor of the One Tahoe program. That, for those that don't recall, it would be charging everyone an admission fee to do, to enter the basin. And for those that live here, we would be paying a monthly or yearly fee for parking in our own driveways and... in our own driveways and go to the post office. So I, I could see that should somebody approve that thing, there would have been a major revolt up here. So that seems to have gone away for now. So it'll be interesting to see what type of funding programs that they'll be talking about tomorrow. The TRPA is, is doing everything they can to get people out of their cars up here. And the only way to get people out of their cars is to provide transportation for them. My wife says, right, we live on, on a hill, so I'm going to walk down to get to the transportation point so that I can go to the, start at the market or wherever, and then have them drop me up there so I can carry all that stuff back up the hill to the house. So I can see that that's, that's going to be interesting. I don't see how with, the way we require, we depend upon our automobiles for transportation. I don't see how they're going to get people out of the cars up here because it's just impractical. So it's a, it's a, let's see what's coming next thing.
Wes, they could give your wife one of those Peruvian head wraps and she could...
She would probably need to start wearing western boots for the key. Be on. So. Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you.
I think that's the most inane thing I ever heard of.
Yep. I think it's credit to this board that they, that we were out early on that. They all did a good job. Mr. Walsh?
I don't have anything to report. I, I did pick up on John's comment about the railroad yard out in Fernley and the fact that nobody's asking a question about water. And I keep on saying this. GOED was formed, the Governor's Office of Economic Development was formed during the Sandoval administration to, to attract businesses to northern Nevada. And it's been very successful. But they never seem to address the questions with the issues of water and where the water is going to come from. And by God, I think, you know, I don't know about you, but I'm, I'm getting ready to leave the board in January, but I will make it my mission to put some pressure on GOED to answer those questions, to find out where we're going to get the water to serve all these businesses.
Yeah, here, here. You've got a good point.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I had the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District meeting on, on Tuesday. And we approved the budget for next year, and they're hoping to hire a half of FTE to help them out. They're, they're doing well. It's a good, it's a very good group.
Good. All right. Well, gentlemen, I think that's, those are good reports, and I think we got some things to work on. If there are no further statements, then we'll call for a closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners or those agenda items where public comment was not taken. All right. Ms. Wood, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, Natalie Wood, for the record. We have three that have come in so far. I will start playing them.
Okay.
Tim Slade. Some of the information provided to you by Community Development and Commissioner Chairman Walder on the master plan update was misleading and inaccurate. Mr. Walder claimed that the online master plan survey had over 1,000 individuals who responded. That claim is highly suspect. It could be 50 responses each from 20 different individuals, or 20 responses each from 50 individuals. Mr. Walder is fully aware of that possibility exists, and he and I have discussed it. And he informed me that there was no way to know the reality of how many distinct individuals had responded. How many of the responses were from community development staff or other county employees? We have no idea. Mr. Walder also referenced the two day, two days of in-person workshops at the community center. I attended the first of those four meetings, and there were only three other members of the public in attendance. Mr. Walder, of course, didn't mention a number of people who actually attended. The photo that was shown on the public outreach page of the PowerPoint while Mr. Delaire was speaking was of a packed community center, implying that was part of the master plan text update process. I assure you, that was not from the workshop or any other text update meeting. Showing that photograph on that page is purposely deceitful. I believe that meeting in the photo concerned the controversial Park Ranch Holdings Master Plan Amendment and Doug Development Agreement, which had almost unanimous opposition from county residents. Commissioner Pencil, Wallace, and Rice, of course, have voted in favor of that ill-advised project nonetheless. On page 954, Community Development claims that the update had a high degree of civic engagement and that for this project, the audience included all residents in all geographic areas of the county. That is an absurd, false, and insulting statement. One important process that has been a part of every previous master plan update has been to go to every identified community in the county and solicit their input into their own community plan, which is the backbone of the master plan. It looks to say Mr. Delaire did not admit that this wasn't done at all during this current update, even though it was due way back in 2016. Not having done the community meetings to update the individual community plans makes this update substantially incomplete, reason enough not to approve this update until those meetings and community plans are done. I don't know if I was amused or dismayed that you still refer to this process in the agenda as the 20-year update. It was, of course, due in 2016. This should probably be called a 24-year update, and since the 25-year update is due next year, I suppose that would be inconvenient. All the more reason to just take the time to do it right instead of rushing through it. It should be done in its entirety, including in-person meetings in every community about their own community plan, and it should not be approved, approved, and that, until that can be completed next year.
Ellie Waller, the DHR issue. Start finding the owners without permits, pour money in the till for future enforcement resources. Not much research is required on some of the identified illegal operators. HDL could write a letter to cease and desist, send it registered to the homeowner, require response in two weeks. If not, a letter with fine structure and requires payment immediately. DHR task will be necessary. 725 in Tahoe with no more, zero in the valley. Beware of what you approve in the valley. We do not want to become the DHR bedroom community for Lake Tahoe visitors. It is within TRPA's purview to address the basin-wide systemic problem called DHR. Commissioner Rice could broach these tweets, TRPA compliance officer, to get TRPA more engaged and get some ideas for enforcement. The TRPA regional plan update states they are responsible for region-wide issues. Quote in the TRPA goals and policies. Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Goals and Policy Statement of Mission. The Tahoe Regional Planning Agency leads the cooperative effort to preserve, restore, and enhance the unique natural and human environment of the Lake Tahoe region while improving local communities and people's interactions with our irreplaceable environment. Principle one, the Tahoe region exhibits unique and irreplaceable environmental and ecological values of national significance which are threatened with deterioration, degradation. Number two, the purpose of TRPA is to maintain the significant scenic, recreational, educational, scenic, natural, and public health values provided by the region and ensure an equilibrium between the region's natural endowment and its man-made environment. Together with these, we encourage the wise use of waters of Lake Tahoe and the resources of the area, preserve public and private investments in the region, and preserve the social and economic health of the region. That is TRPA's responsibility. I'm hoping that maybe we can have some coordinated meetings with El Dorado County, Washoe County, and figure out how TRPA can help with this problem.
Inex?
Good afternoon, county commissioners. Eric Gavon, Tahoe Douglas Fire Marshal, for the record. Wanted to thank you for your hard work in the work for the DHR task force and adding the enforcement on that. I definitely appreciate that. From our perspective here at Lake Tahoe, we would like to see that program moving forward. And we appreciate all your efforts there. Also, working with the sheriff, and we are putting together a campaign for, to reduce drunk driving and impaired driving up here at the lake. We did have an unfortunate crash recently that affected our VEPR crew. And one of the, the individual that was killed in the, in the crash at the Presbyterian Conference turn was hit possibly by an impaired driver, crossed over three lanes of travel. And he was off duty. He's working for the BLM at, at this time, but had worked for ZEPR crew. So it really hits close to home. We've had a lot of crashes, a lot, but for up here, we've had several. And so the sheriff's in agreement, we're working on looking at how we can get information out to the servers, do some re-education of the Office of Traffic Safety, working with Melissa at the county, and of course, the sheriff, NHP, and the Office of Traffic Safety. So I wanted to let you guys know that that's going on, and appreciate any support you can lend in that area. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last message received. It came in at 4:09 PM. You're muted, sir.
I think you're muted, Barry.
Yes, I am, David, and that's the way you like me the best.
I didn't say that.
Maybe John said it, I don't know. Yeah, we'll wait another three minutes just to see if anybody wants to chime in. That'd be 4:25.
Natalie? Can you hear me? Does Zoom have a reverse mute button?
I don't, it doesn't have that once they give you guys the ability to mute or unmute your calls. I can't take it away.
You know, and some of the other things I've seen on this Zoom thing, on the side, they have a chat section. Do we have that capability?
We have turned that off so that it doesn't accidentally show up in the Zoom meeting itself. So Sue, our videographer, does not have the ability to confirm that it won't show up when they're recording it. So we've just disabled it so in case side messages, you know, could possibly show up, it just doesn't seem like a good idea to have it. So you have the ability to chat with myself as the host, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the things I just discovered is that your spacebar, you can turn your mute off and on quickly.
It, it looks like, given all the COVID stuff, that we're probably going to be doing this type of meeting for a while.
That works. How did you find that out?
Well, I, that's just my guess. The governor has made a lot of statements that, that foreshadow even some additional restrictions. What, what do you think, Mr. Gates? I probably shouldn't ask you that now.
Yeah, you're reading between the lines.
Yeah.
I think we'll find out Tuesday or Wednesday and next week, be my guess.
I would like to thank Mr. Walsh for making the effort to be here, and it's good to see that he's up and around.
When did the, the next state economic data come out?
They do a forecast in, I'm not sure of the exact date. I believe it's December, right before the governor finalizes his budget.
Okay.
Okay, it's 4:25. We waited an additional three minutes after having almost 15 minutes of public comment. Do we have any additional public comment?
No, sir, no additional public comment.
All right. With no additional public comment, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady, for, ladies, for working with us today.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving.
Happy holiday, yes.
We do, and Larry, it's good to see you.